You all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Thank you. Okay. Ready? I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible and liberate and just as for all. Okay. Good evening. This is Zili. Can you hear me? Okay. Yeah. Good evening and welcome to the May 19, 2022, meeting of the Phillips Town Planning Board. I'm on the MTA board, and one of my colleagues was complaining that we don't do the Pledge of Allegiance at the MTA. And I said, well, we do it here in Phillips Town, so maybe we should bring a little bit of our local patriotism to the city. So I have, see if I can get that done. I apologize for being absent last month. I had COVID, but thankfully I was fine. But I got to watch the proceedings, and all was quite smooth, and I appreciate that. Let's have the roll call, please.
Kim Conner.
Here.
Dennis Gagnon.
Here.
Peter Lewis is not here. Laura O'Connell, not here. Neil Toman.
Here.
Heidi Wendell.
Here.
Neil Zuckerman.
Here. Okay. Thank you. All right. Our motion to approve the minutes for April 21st.
I have a correction.
God bless.
Okay. So on the last page, somewhere in here, it refers to me as a he.
Oh, sorry.
I think. But I don't remember exactly where it is. So that's my only correction.
Okay.
Okay. Any other gender or non-gender-based corrections? Now, okay, I have a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstentions. Thank you. All right, great. We have a piece of correspondence related to River View Industries. I don't know if, Glenn, you want to say anything about it, or is it self-explanatory?
I think it's self-explanatory.
Okay.
From Margaret?
It's signed by you, actually, but someone may have your signature pen.
From Margaret, probably.
Yeah.
Yeah. We're coming up on needing a renewal because we're still waiting on the state to issue the permit.
Okay. Folks, any comments on this?
I don't think we have any choice. I think we have statutory. Am I right, Adam?
That's correct.
Fine.
You can grant it for a year.
Sorry. One more time? It's statutory, or are we granted for a year?
Under the statute, you can grant the extension for one year.
They're asking for a six-month extension, so.
Normally, six months.
Okay. All right.
Who's holding him up, Glenn? Is it the?
State D O T.
D O T?
Everything's in D O T. That's the only other pool we actually need.
Okay. Well, can I get a motion, then?
I'll make a motion, too.
Second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? No? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Okay. Thank you, Glenn.
Thank you.
All right. We rejiggered the order because we missed them last time. We have the Lou Kingsley Tree and Landscaping Project, new business.
Good evening.
Floor is yours. I think you need a mic. You're gonna have to.
I think you can talk from there.
I think you can talk from there.
I like the point.
Okay. Oh, fine. That's not, oh, oh, God. Okay.
Jason Snyder with Badine Watson representing the applicants, Ian Kingsley and Forrest Kingsley. They are proposing a two-story mixed-use structure on Old Albany Post Road North. They're proposing, it's at the end of Mountain Brook Drive. They're proposing a four-bay garage on the ground floor and two-bedroom apartments on the second floor. It requires subject and well-service approval from the Health Department, which they had approval for a five-bedroom residence on this lot, which is 750 gallons a day, and this proposal is 500 gallons a day, so two-thirds of the required capacity. So once we have floor plans, we'll get that into the Health Department and get that approval going. But anyways, this is in the, this is in the commercial industrial. Commercial, what is it? Commercial?
Office commercial.
Office commercial industrial.
Mixed use.
Mixed use. We do have, on the west side of the road, it's residential. We have the countryside motel. This is just north of the Countryside Motel. You got Benchmark Auto on the corner here, and then Countryside, and then there's a residence on the north side. You got Old Albany Post Road on the west here, and Route 9. It has fronted down Route 9, which is really not accessible. You got Clove Creek running to the north, right through the middle of the property. So this is a, what they're proposing is, this is for their businesses. Basically, vehicle, it's for their vehicles, for their business. There's no, you know, they're, Ian is in the, they're both in the tree business. There's gonna be no onsite, there's no outside storage, there's no, you know, this is just for the vehicles. There's nothing going on related to their businesses onsite. And then the second floor, like I said, is two two-bedroom apartments. They intend to each inhabit each apartment. So the apartments are really for them, I believe, is what the plan is. So we kind of lined up the entrance with Mountain Brook Drive. We have a parking area. We do have the buffer from Clove Creek, 100, you know, right along the buffer, but I think we can get everything done without disturbing the buffer. We got the proposed septic system in roughly the same location that the five-bedroom septic was proposed for the house, well, is in the same general location. We have three parking spaces proposed for the two, for the two apartments, and we have four for the garage in the businesses. We have some screening proposed along the road. Like I said, we got the, the house, this house is pretty far away. This should be heavily wooded in here as a buffer from this house. This is actually the garage. You get the houses way up here. And then you got, you got the Countryside Motel is down here, and, you know, this is vegetated in here. This is pretty much open, but like I said, we got some screening proposed. There's plenty of site distance that, I don't think that's really, I don't think that's an issue. I think that's about it.
All right. Ron.
Yeah, I think the applicants reasonably described the overall commercial proposal. It's a 3,200-square-foot building that they're proposing, two-story, as described, it's commercial, it's garages on the first floor, apartments on the second. There's no planned outside storage or construction activities to be occurring onsite, exterior to the building. Because a mixed-use dwelling is proposed, they require both special permit and site plan approval. So initially, I think the board typically likes to classify the project since it's a mixed-use building in excess of 3,000 square feet. Per code, it represents a major project and should be classified as such tonight. With respect to Seeker, it's an unlisted action, so as the board understands, you have the option of doing a coordinated or uncoordinated review. On the whole, it's a fairly minor project, but you'll probably likely wish to make a site inspection, just to verify any kind of environmental issues. As described, Clove Creek operates in the rear of the tract, closer to 9, Route 9, and that's actually a DEC classified wetlands, W P 17. So that would be insignificant for the board. There's a few referrals that are required. Since it's adjacent to Route 9, you need a 239 G M L referral. And as described, the Department of Health is also involved for the proposed wetland septic system. Relative to other referrals, not required but typically accomplished, you may wish to refer it to the Conservation Board, given the proximity of the Clove Creek and wetlands, and also another referral to North Highlands Engine Company. So those are a few things you could do tonight. One is classify the project as major, authorize the secretary to do, accomplish initial referrals, and then determine if you wish to conduct a site inspection of the property.
All right. Adam, anything you want to add?
Nothing beyond what Ron just mentioned.
Okay. All right. Board members' questions. Kim.
I just have, sorry. I just have a nitpicky question from the environmental assessment form. On page three, it says, what parks serve the project's site? And it says Phillips Town Community Center, Depot Theater, and Phillips Town Town Park. I just want to know why Depot Theater is a park.
I think I just listed all the rec from the page.
All right.
I'll take that off.
Yeah. It just was confusing to me. And then the only other question I have is actually a question for Ron and Adam. On page seven, it says of the F A F, will the proposed action for commercial or industrial projects only generate newer additional demand for energy? Yes. Estimated annual electricity demand, 15,000 kilowatt-hours. I'm just curious, like, what would constitute a threshold for that kind of thing? Like, how many kilowatt-hours would be excessive that we would care about?
I don't know. But you recognize that it's essentially no more than a few apartments and some construction equipment. It's not gonna be materially different than a residential structure or residential.
This is just a general question, though, like, in the future, like, when we.
Yeah. Well, I can look into that. It's also possible that A K R F may have that answer as well, but we can provide that to the board at a future meeting.
Yeah. Just because that's gonna be something in the future we're gonna start caring about, I think, energy in a big way. So that's basically it for me.
Okay. Other questions? Anyone? No? 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 I've got a couple of quick ones. So you mentioned a couple of times, Jason, the past approvals. I didn't see a lot of reference in the materials about that. So who owned that before? What were the approvals? By when? I just.
It was, okay, so it was owned for a long time by Donna Thompson. Donna Thompson.
Someone not the Kingsley.
Correct. And they owned it for a long time.
Okay.
And they did the subdivision. This is the subdivision plat. There was an existing, there was this old existing house here, and they subdivided, they didn't really do anything with this. They subdivided off this piece, and that's what we have now. It was proposed as a residence in the subdivision. And then subsequent to that, we got Board of Health approval for a five-bedroom residence at this location.
So the extent of the approvals was county health for septic?
That's it.
Okay. There's no site plan?
No, no site plan, no building permits were ever issued, no driveway permits were ever. It was just the Board of Health approval on that.
Ron, would you mind? I don't mean to put you on the spot, but could you compare and contrast the five-bedroom house and its role or its use in the spot versus this current? Is this a greater, more extensive use of the spot than a five-bedroom house?
I don't think it'd be materially different at all. I don't think the structure itself would be any significant change. I suspect the residential property may seek to have more yard that might intrude in the wetlands proper. This is really a commercial business and apartments for the owners.
Okay. And then last question. Could you just walk us through a bit more of the special permit, please? Because that term obviously makes one think it's not normal, hence the word "special", so, which means it should be granted with some reasons as opposed to just by matter of course. So you just say a bit more about what the special permit is?
Sure. The code specifically identifies mixed-use buildings in excess of 3,000 square feet requiring a special permit. So as you say, it warrants further scrutiny. There are specific criteria that are applied as you go through this process and understand the considerations that apply to a special permit. My expectation is that that would be addressed further once you conduct a site visit and can walk through those specific special permit criteria.
Fine. So maybe in the interim, you could provide us some guidance in preparation for that site visit of the special permit. Simply just telling us what chapter it is in the zoning code would be a helpful start, but then let's just enumerate them at the site visit so we know what we're looking for.
Exactly. In the memorandum, I've identified the section of the code that relates to special permit criteria. So we'll have that available at the site visit and can discuss that further then.
Great. All right. So let's then go through. Any other questions, board members? Last go?
No.
No? Okay. All right. Can I get a motion to classify this as a major project, please? Thank you. Second.
I'll second.
Thank you. Heidi, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Okay. It's a major project. There you go. I'd like to, you said earlier, Ron, it's a minor project that's a major project.
There you go.
Okay. No secret, because it's unlisted, nothing. Do we need to make a secret determination?
You have to, you should decide if you're gonna do a coordinated or uncoordinated review. Coordinated would involve circulation to other involved agencies, specifically the Department of Health. But again.
But we're gonna make a referral to them anyway, are we not?
You'd be making a generic referral, just so they're aware of the application. But again, on many minor projects, you often just do uncoordinated reviews.
Does any, I mean, I think I'd prefer us to stick with our uncoordinated process, but do you have a different recommendation?
That's very often what this board does.
All right. So we'll stick with that, then. So we do not need a motion, then, for that?
Well, you should classify it, or you should make a determination that the board will do an uncoordinated review.
Okay. Well, then, I'm fine.
I'll make a motion that it's an uncoordinated review.
Okay. Second?
I'll second.
All right. I'll take Dennis on the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Okay. Let's get a referral to the Department of Planning for the G M L 239 referral. Okay. I won't quiz anyone on what that is. May I have a motion, please? Actually, Ron, why don't you educate us? 239 M referral. One more time, please.
General municipal law in New York State. 239 refers to required municipal actions that warrant submittal to and reviewed by the County Planning Department. So there's a whole list of things that warrant referral to the county, and one of those criteria is being within 500 feet of the state road.
Got it.
So that's what triggers it.
Understood.
It's very likely they'll have nothing to, no comments to offer.
Okay. Understood. So may I have a motion, then, for the Department of Planning referral related to the 500 feet within? Thank you. Kim, second. Neil, I think you deserve a second this time. Neil Toman has the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Okay. Motion passes. Referral to the Department of Health, then, which is a notification, I suspect, alone. May I have, thank you. Kim, you can't have all the.
I just, you know, I just want to get going.
All right. Well, we're going. We're moving. There's nothing holding us back. All right. Second.
I'll second.
All right. Dennis, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you very much. And then we do site inspection calendars, please. Cheryl, will you be the first available for the 5th of June, yeah?
Yes.
Anyone have a challenge with the 5th of June? Jason, 5th of June work for you?
I can't make that.
Can't make it? Okay.
I mean, I could hold school. We'll get the site independently.
Well, I'd like to have as much attendance as possible, especially since it's a major project.
Grandson's baptism.
Oh, that's a good one.
Minor-major.
Minor-major. Well, I'm not available. I'm in Boston on the 12th, so Father's Day is the 19th, so maybe we do the 5th, and Dennis, you drive by, just because.
Actually, I might be able to make it, because looking at the timeframe, I.
The party's not till later.
Well, it said 1:15.
We'll get you out. You'll make it. How far?
I don't want to go in jeans, though.
I know. I know. I'm with you. I'm with you.
Okay. 9:30.
9:30. 5th. Everyone else? Jason, good. Ron, good?
Just so I can speak to that, my wife Barbara is expecting a grandson anytime after the beginning of June, so I could be here, I may not.
All right. Well, that's, those are both very good reasons you and Dennis have, so congratulations both. June 5th.
Okay.
Okay? Okay. All right. We'll do that. Cheryl, you'll notice is appropriate, site visit, and we'll go from there. All right. Jason, thank you very much. All right. Kim, I'm gonna turn it over to you for the Hunt-Potter matter, since I was not here last month.
Okay. So last month, Jolie Hunt and William Potter came back to us to revise their site improvement and amended, sorry, to get amended site plan approval because they enlarged their decks that they were gonna put in as by a third, I think, as I remember. Does that seem right to you, Neil? Yeah. So what we have in front of us are a resolution to adopt a neg deck under Seeker and a resolution for the amended, to approve the amended site plan. Does anybody have anything they want to say about it? No? Okay. So in that case, if someone would make a motion to adopt the negative declaration under Seeker?
I'll make that motion.
Dennis, second?
Second.
Neil, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed?
I'm gonna abstain.
Abstain, and one abstention, Neil Zuckerman. Okay.
I think we're still good, though. Adam, from a quorum perspective, we've got four, we've got five of the seven, and so four of the seven voting is.
Correct.
Cool. All right. Good.
So the second resolution, I'm sorry, second motion we need is for approval of the amended site plan.
I'll make that motion.
Dennis, second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Neil Zuckerman. Motion carries. So I think that's all we have to do for that.
Good. Okay. Good. Thank you very much. So this is, we'll have our two Hudson projects now. Start with the Hudson Highlands Reserve. So the purpose of tonight's conversation is to discuss the finding statement. Last month, the board voted to accept the final environmental impact statement related to the Hudson Highlands Reserve, and tonight, we're gonna discuss the finding statement, which is derivative of that F E I S. We're gonna get into effectively an editing conversation tied to apparently two versions of the document that's been sent. One, that was sent with our typical materials, which is posted to the town website, and the second, that is a red-line version, I believe, is additions from the applicant that the board got less than 24 hours ago. So I, for example, did not look at the additional version, but some members did. So we're gonna give feedback on both documents, because that's the problem when you have version control. That's why we ask things to be submitted by a deadline, but I want to be respectful since several board members did have a chance today to look at the second version. I'm just gonna make a couple of points about this project, because it's been before us for a long time, and since I was not able to join last week, I would have given some version of these remarks last time, so I'm just gonna say a few things. So first of all, as I've said many times in front of this board, the Planning Board's job is to balance community rights with property rights, and that's a difficult task, and it is required within the confines of the state law and the local zoning code. We started valuing Hudson Highlands Reserve on October 14, 2014. I think you and I were the only ones on the board at that time, and we've been in four locations since then, and have had a number of board members both leave the board and pass away during their time on this board. It's been a seven and a half years. And during this time, myself included, we made several things clear to the applicant about environmental concerns. The first was the volume of manure, vehicles, and the general business from the horse farm. The second was the number of the homes themselves. The third was the surrounding of the pond, and the fourth was the layout, which, to some extent, disturbed the flow of animals potentially, and the general layout. Is that me? Oh, all right. That's okay. Always weird to hear your voice on feedback. Anyway, since that time, we did make a positive declaration. That was in 2018, and the applicant came back and took out the farm, took out, took down the number of homes of 24, removed many of the houses from around the pond, and tightened up the layout. I would say, then, the positive declaration and the planning board process worked. It helped create a plan and the incentives to the applicant to revise the plan in keeping with the community voiced and with the board felt appropriate. There are several concerns the public has still raised, even in the past few days. We've received a number of letters during that 10-day comment period, and I want to acknowledge these letters. I want to acknowledge that the group of letter writers were organized. Many of them were from a similar template with the same points, and that is a point that tells me the folks felt the need to coordinate, that they were frustrated, and we understand that. That means that they had a common viewpoint. And they had four comments. One was that the conserving land couldn't be built on in any case, even if it was not conserved. Their point was that the houses were in a uniform nature, that they were all of the same dimensions and the same layout. They were concerned about access to Route 9, and that Route 9 is a very busy road, which we've mentioned that many times as a board, and which a couple of us are gonna go before the town board on June 2nd to talk about. And the last thing that's been mentioned multiple times is there's no, at least to this point, no holder of the conservation easement at this point. That may have changed since last submitted, but that was the point. Let me just address these four briefly. Conserving land. As best as Steve Gabba has advised us, the code allows for land to be conserved that is not necessarily perfect land. In fact, the code on page 73 states very clear that it is 75% value, meaning if you have an acre of land that's perfectly good, an acre that is perfectly steep slopes, it's complete cliff, it's still counted 75%. So, whomever wrote the code, which is this town's government, felt that that kind of land counted. We have to live within the code. Steve Gabba keeps telling me that. The zoning code does not require the applicant to create a variety of home sizes and styles. Clustering is encouraged but not required. Therefore, again, we are living within our code. We must live within it. Access to and from Route 9. It's a state road, and there's nothing we have the power to restrict access to Route 9. As I mentioned, we're going to go before the town board and talk about it. We do think it's getting busy, and this plan is predicated on access to and only to Route 9 and with state DOT approval. There is no plan if there's no access to Route 9. There's no access north or south on the property that will be allowed in this plan. And then finally, I see nothing in legal counsel can advise other that the holder of the easement, that there's not one yet, is a restriction to a secret determination, which is what we're doing. The last thing I'd say is, one of the letter writers, who is a personal friend over the many years, Madeline McGinley, who had a major accident on Route 9 right at Horton Road a few years ago. She was rear-ended by a semi-trailer. She wrote in one of her letters, "This points to a weakness in the code itself." This points to a weakness in the code itself. And I will tell you, ladies and gentlemen, that we are not above the law. We're applying the zoning code. Yes, we're not a machine, so we don't, you know, we have opinions, we have judgments. It is a partially subjective process, but only partial. So, we have a weakness in the code. I agree with Madeline. And so, we're going to talk about that in front of the town board on Route 9, about Route 9, but there are many other topics, and maybe the town board wants to bring up the notion of what land counts towards conserving. But I think we are doing our appropriate best within advice from legal counsel, and again, balancing the needs of the community with the needs of property owners to try and make a determination. So, I'm sorry that I went long on that, but I would have made that semi-lucid speech last month, but I just thought I wanted to share that with you. So, that's where we are, and so now, what we're going to do is we're going to go through individual comments to the finding statement. So, I'm going to just go in order, and we're going to start with, and again, I realize we have different versions here. I'm going to start with the original version, the one that was sent when, Cheryl?
5/11.
Aren't you usually on that side?
Yeah.
So, I keep, okay. I keep looking there, okay. When was it sent?
5/11.
5/11. So, we're going to use the one that's May 11th. For those following at home, this is the one that's on the site. Is that correct? Okay. So, I'm going to start, I'm going to take comments on the original version first. And again, the purpose of this is to provide edits to the finding statement. That was all, again, we already accepted the FEIS, so this is basically a distillation of the FEIS.
Can I say one thing?
Yes, ma'am.
So, the revised version has the original version in it.
Okay.
So, I think we can probably proceed simultaneously because it just, it's redlined, so...
Okay. Well, I will do my best to follow along with the redlining.
No, I'll just, how many of us are using the redlined copy? Is it just me?
I have the redline, which is what I was focusing on.
So, Dennis and I can be the redline, and Ryan, you lead, and we'll just follow because we'll be able to tell.
Well, we're just going to go in order. So, you just get to a paragraph, and you call out, like, let's just do that.
Good.
What's that? Someone just start. Dennis, you begin. Where do you got something?
Okay. I was focusing in on the edited version.
Yep.
Call out a page number, and I've been scolded here.
Get guy voice to the microphone, sir.
So, I saw this arrive this morning, started really reviewing it early afternoon. I just wanted to clarify for our sake and also for the public's sake that this is our document, correct? Correct. Okay. A couple of things that I have regarding the edited comments. On page 8, last paragraph, the third bulletin, asking the question on the edit, "Why the deletion of the consultation of the North Highlands Fire Department review regarding the installation of the suction hydrant was deleted?" There must be some type of reason or question.
Did you just call a page number, please?
Page 8.
Page 8.
Paragraph 3.
Thank you.
Oh, excuse me, last paragraph, third bulletin.
This part was removed.
Third bulletin.
Oh, there's another version. God, Jesus.
No, this part was removed. So, I don't know what you're...
This is what Cheryl just put in my...
Okay.
Okay. This really, I think, highlights what I suggested today. We need more time.
Yeah.
There's many versions.
There's now three versions.
There's many versions. We need more time. This is a major project. We need more time to consider it.
Yeah. No, it's fair.
Can you just give us a little bit more time?
Well, hold on. Slow down, slow down. So, each board member has reviewed a version, it seems like.
Yes.
And I think it's perfectly fine to share comments that they have now to allow our advisors who are sitting here to take those comments. We are not going to make, as I've said before, we're not going to make any vote this evening. We have three different versions, apparently, but I think we are sitting here, we might as well share what feedback we do have.
Okay. But nobody responded to my request for more time. I think we should have a special meeting on this project.
Well, I don't know if we need a special meeting. We can certainly do it the next meeting and cover the revisions. I think what is clear, and this is directed at AKRF, is at the two-week mark, which is usually our point of finality, that is the final version. I'm speaking to you, Aaron. The final version is of that date, and it is not to edit, not to be changed and sent revised versions the day before or the day of, because it's not possible for this board, who are volunteers, to be editing documents on the fly like that. That's a very reasonable response. So, I think what I'd like to suggest is everyone give their comments now. You have until the usual drop, which is Thursday evening, or what time's it? Thursday, 5 o'clock?
Yeah.
And that is the last edit, and then that gets sent to the board like we always do with all our materials, and then we'll review it again at the next meeting without any more interim iterations between that Thursday, which is what date?
June 2nd.
June 2nd, and the next meeting, which is on therefore, I guess, June 16.
16.
So, that'll be the end, there'll be no more edits after June 2nd. Okay? This, again, there's a volunteer board. We do this a lot. This board, I think, tries to be very flexible. So, let's go through, let's go back through, Dennis, whatever remarks you have are perfectly good and useful. Aaron will take notes, or Chris in the back, and then we'll collect those, and we can review, then we'll have a final, not final, sorry, but a solidified version that we can then review again next time. Okay? So, back to you, Dennis.
Turning over. Page 8, last paragraph, third bolted down. The edited version deleted a comment regarding the consultation with the North Highlands Fire Department to review regarding the installation of a suction hydrant, I'm assuming at the pond. Not quite sure why that was removed. It's a safety issue. I don't think we're looking for answers right now.
Unless you have a specific...
Yeah.
But I don't want to debate opinions of perspective. I want to debate if there's some reason why you deleted it technically.
Aaron didn't delete it.
I did.
You deleted it? Or it seems the...
It was feedback from the applicant.
Aaron, hold on.
Let me give a history of that first.
Aaron, hold on.
Sure.
Can you hear him? Yeah, okay, got it.
Okay. It's okay if I sit. It's easier with the laptop.
The public can't see you now.
I see you.
Okay.
Okay. So, originally, that was an addition by Ron Gaynor, after he originally looked at the 5/11 draft that you all have, that you all got first. His understanding was that was something that he thought was going to be required. It turns out that since that time, the applicant was proposing to sprinkler all the homes, and it sounded like the applicant had communicated with the fire department about that and got some conditional okay, that that was enough, and there's concern that if there's, if there is an installation of a suction hydrant at the pond, the disturbance is going to be required to put that in. It's going to disturb the conservation easement area. You're going to put a road in, you're going to have to pave it, you're going to have to bring fire trucks down to the pond. It's pretty significant. So, the sprinkling of the homes seems to be the answer, but again, when you go to site plan review, they're going to look at it then, and they can opine at that point if they want to see that.
Okay. Question then, why was it put in there in last week's submission? Or why was it...
Ron, you want to add to that?
I mean, the goal of preparing the finding statement is to pick up the significant commitments of the applicant or the understanding of what mitigation has been offered. In the original DEIS, that original statement that you're reading was contained therein. So, it's understood that there was once a question about whether a suction hydrant should be provided. So, we were not aware of any commitments or rather referral letters that came back from the North Highlands Fire Engine Company. So, that, no, go ahead. So, the, so that statement was inserted in the initial draft. I provided that to AKRF for their insertion. Since that time, through discussions with the applicant, there was some understanding that possibly they had reviewed this issue with the fire company and that that might have been resolved. So, I said, "In any event, a referral needs to be made during the site plan subdivision review." So, in lieu of all that text, it got reduced to just acknowledging there will be another referral to the fire department. So, they'll have another ability to raise any concerns they have, and this board will then take those under advisement. So, it's still in there.
Okay. I took it that the applicant removed that completely on, for their behalf.
Well, they had raised a concern over it, but again, from my perspective, you don't want to give up the idea that there's going to be another referral to the fire department.
I see.
And whatever comes out of that, you'll understand.
I appreciate that.
AKRF and Ron both communicated with the applicant about this.
Okay. I didn't read it as that. I took it that, the way, now, again, this came in at, I think, 9:53 this morning. I didn't see it until afternoon, and I was trying to get prepared for tonight's meeting.
Understood.
So, I took it that the applicant removed that. My question was why?
I had the same question.
Okay. Page 11, third paragraph referencing lot number 20.
Just make sure Aaron gets to that page. Page 11.
Third paragraph referencing lot number 20.
Okay.
Just why the, and again, I'm taking it that this was unedited by the applicant.
Yeah. I made a mistake in the text in describing the existing structures in the vicinity of lot 20 specifically, and they corrected me on that. So, the information's correct. It's there now. Basically, there's the...
Because the question was why the removal of the word historic, figuring that would give leeway to some changes down the road. So, it was a concern.
No, it still says historic, early 19th century barn. It's just they're two different buildings. I had them originally as one.
Okay. A little confusing then. On page 17, paragraph...
Dennis, hold on. Kim, go ahead.
I just want to add one thing there because I'm in the same place as you. It says historic, early 1980th century barn. So, is it 19th century barn or an 18th century barn?
My understanding is 19th. 18th was in there, and I struck it because it says 19th everywhere else.
In my version, it says 198th.
That's historic.
Go ahead.
Okay. Not in mine, but that's an easy fix.
Okay. Page 17, the fourth paragraph. Why the insertion of the word "all of which" is describing medium and high conservation value? Why was that put in? And now, my question is, who put that in then? And why the low, why lower in the same paragraph adding, having low conservation value? These edits only seem to be adding a direct narrative for the applicant's benefit.
It's just clarifying the conservation analysis findings that were done, what, 2016?
Okay.
Basically, the 78% of the site, which is going to have the conservation easement, was determined to have medium to high value for conservation at that time. So, that's just clarifying "all of which."
I think what Dennis is saying is that it seems like it's superfluous language, and so we don't need to have it, because I don't think it, it didn't add anything.
It didn't add anything to it. It made me question why it was put in, as if it was setting up for something. And again, I was taking it that it was the applicant's...
It doesn't matter who did. I think your point is the same.
Okay.
So, could strike it?
My mindset was...
Yes.
Page 19, second to last paragraph. Why the deletion of the word "removal and replace with closure"? This is regarding the gate where it showed removal, removal was, removal of the gate or roadway and replace with closure. It seems to indicate that closure, removal being completely gone, closure being being closed, that could be reopened at a later date. So...
Yeah. I think that just means that the driveway will be closed off and allowed to just regrow as part of the conservation area.
Why the change?
The applicant recommended it.
I know, but I think what you're taking is, as Dennis said at the beginning, this is our document. So, even if the applicant chose the term, because clearly they mean to, therefore, if something is closed, it retains the option to be open, and Dennis is saying, "No, it should stay as removal."
Right.
So, Dennis is a co-author of this document. If he votes for it, he's saying politely, "Please turn it back to what it was before."
As an example, you have a doorway. I say, "I'm going to remove that door, doorway, close it off. It's gone. It's done."
Correct.
Versus, "I'm going to enclose that door."
Correct.
Which means it can be opened again. So, I'm questioning why that was changed. And again, I'm taking it that was from the applicant.
It was. But if you want it back to removal, you can change it back.
Can I explain?
Sure. You need to come to the mic. Let's keep it trimmed, Mr. Gross.
Very simply, oh, where's my...
Over there.
Oh, you got it. Very simply, because we had proposed the preservation of the historic road with the stone walls and everything, and when it talked about removing part of the historic road, which is what that part is, then we're not preserving the historic road. And it says that, you know, it would be graded and planted and all of that. So, we're talking about a permanent closure, absolutely permanent closure, but leaving the historic, you know, the, what constitutes the historic road in place.
The way it describes is the driveway, not roadway. So, I'm looking at that completely different than you are.
Right.
A driveway is a small section of an entry, as far as I'm concerned. You're talking about now a roadway.
Yeah, and that happens to be, what was being used as a one-lane driveway was a one-lane, early 19th century road.
I understand that. I'm just questioning why you would remove the removal of it and just call it closure of it.
Because we didn't want to propose the removing of a cultural resource. That's what it comes down to.
And again, I'm looking at the necessity of the change. Why?
Again, because it talks about grading and planting it and...
Dennis, what word would you prefer? Would you prefer removal or a closure?
Removal was fine.
Okay.
Closure I could deal with, but I'm just trying to understand why it was changed.
I think we, I think, Mr. Gross, I think we got your point.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dennis, I think you're suggesting returning the word removal. Let's continue.
Okay. I have one more item. On page 20, second paragraph, why the adding of the verbiage "proposed development," trying to, this is pertaining to the views from the site, from Fonstock to the site, and it says the proposed development portions of this site. Why was that, I mean, I don't understand why that was added. The proposed develop portions of the site. This is the second paragraph pertaining to the views, I believe, from Fonstock.
The reason, I did that one, too. The reason is that from Fonstock, you can actually see what is the actual property, the edge of the property, but you will not be able to see any of the development of the...
As proposed.
Exactly. You can see part of the property that comes out to East Mountain Road South.
I'm familiar with it.
Right. So, that you can see, but you won't see any changes whatsoever.
Okay. But I guess...
So, it's for accuracy.
The wording "proposed," meaning that what's proposed now could be changed to something later on.
No, no.
I'm just wondering, again, why that was changed.[1672.83] I'm just wondering, again, why that was changed, that's all.
Um, I could have put the developed portion of the property, but that made it sound like what's currently developed. So I put what's the proposed developed portion of the property. It was just for accuracy because of the fact that if you're talking about the entire property, there's a, uh, an area that's going to be completely preserved that is visible from portions of Fonstock.
You're right.
Um, so it was just for accuracy.
You okay with that change?
I'm okay with it. I think I understand the logic.
He's maybe seeing, it was inaccurate before because you could see parts of the project site from Fonstock.
Well, when, when the, the term "proposed," as it is now, could be something different if something changed.
I, I agree. I mean, Mr. Gross, here's the thing. Any more edits you have, please, send them to Aaron so you can list them separately, because I think what you're, you're noticing is you're-
That's exactly what we did.
They're in a document version that they, that my colleague looked at, and I think it's causing a lot of confusion as to why, and therefore, there's all these questions about the purpose of the changes, and it's not, I don't think it's a productive debate, unfortunately. So let's, let's, let's hold off any, this is not for beckon call. We're going to move on. So, any other comments?
I'm done.
Kim.
Okay, so I have the, um, the redlined version, which says 51122 draft at the bottom, but that doesn't mean that that's what it is.
There were more.
I'm on page four.
Page four.
I'm in the fourth paragraph. Now, I think Dennis's pages are numbered differently than mine, so, you know.
Oh, that's scary. So just read the beginning.
So there's a paragraph that says, um, I'm sorry, I take it back. I put my sticker in the wrong place. Um, second paragraph from the bottom of the page, "Primary access to the proposed project would be from a new non-gated access road that will be constructed from Route 9." And then in this paragraph, there's reference to an unpaved dirt road and then to the historic road and much of the historic road. And I'd just like some consistency, like either an unpaved dirt road or a historic road, but, you know, not both, because it seems like the unpaved, you took out historic under, next unpaved dirt road, but then it's a historic road later. It seems like it's two different roads.
Did you catch that, Aaron?
Yep, okay. So, on page five, the paragraph under the bullet points, this is just copy editing. It says, between the lot lines, lot lines is in red, Aaron, "of residential properties and the 100-foot buffer are, it should be is critical-"
Can someone turn off their ringer, please?
It should be is critical to the protection of the pond. The next paragraph at the bottom, it says, "The proposed project would also require an aquifer overlay special permit along with site plan approval and conservation subdivision approval from the Phillips Town Planning Board." And this is actually kind of a question for Ron. Who, where does, who grants the aquifer overlay special permit? Is that the town board?
Uh, sincerely, I'd have to investigate it. I don't know that, uh, I was aware of that.
Us, or if it was the town board. It says, "along with site plan approval and conservation subdivision approval." So, I've looked through the code, and I don't see anything specific that says conservation subdivision approval, like this is what conservation subdivision approval consists of, separate from site plan approval. So if there is, you know, part of the code that we should know about that's about-
The reference to conservation subdivision is merely that that's what's proposed by the project. The operative term is, you're giving subdivision approval for the subdivision of the lots.
Okay, so the, so there's no special section of the code that says conservation subdivision approval?
No.
Okay, because that's just, was confusing. Let's see. On page seven.
From that sentence, instead of conservation subdivision, they could just say subdivision approval?
It seems to me like that might be better, but, you know, I defer to my colleagues and to Ron.
Aaron is fine, just strike it.
Okay. Um, page seven, there's a box at the top, and underneath the box, there's a paragraph that starts out, "As noted in the FEIS following approval of plans and all other requested permits through the town, the project sponsor invisions that construction of the proposed project would be phased in the following manner, period." Then there's a new sentence, "However, this conceptual phasing is subject to refinement as the project proceeds through the site plan review process." I find that awkward, you know, usually when it's the following manner, whatever follows, follows and not extra sentences that change that. So I, if you can think about how to make that English-
Well, that sentence was clearly added, so we should just strike the sentence. It is not in the version-
Or move it so, so that it makes sense.
I can, I can fix the following manner part to look better.
Um, then, the next thing I have is on the same page at the bottom. It says, "Construction of new homes cannot proceed until blah, blah, blah." Accord, and then further on in that paragraph, it says, "According to the project sponsor, all 22 new homes will be approximately 2,500 to 3,000 square feet." So my question here, we've talked about this all along, how big are these houses going to be? And what I want to know is, is it 2,500 to 3,000 square feet footprint? Or 2,500 to 3,000 square feet total structure? Does anybody know that? Because those are two very different things.
I can't answer that.
I've always thought that was the square footage of the house.
Yeah, that's right.
That's, I've always taken it to mean the square footage of the house, but the, but when you do site plan, you know, when you apply for a permit to build something, what the building inspector is interested in is the footprint. So for example, when, um, new houses come before our board, they come before our board because they have a footprint of over 3,000 square feet, not because the total size of the house is 3,000 square feet.
Right, further down, it says that, if there's anything with a footprint greater than 3,000, it would be subject to site plan review by the planning board. The 2,500 to 3,000 is, is out of the FEIS in the applicant's responses.
Well, again, the, when the footprint was added by somebody, not the version we saw-
Right, that was added by the applicant, to clarify.
Yeah, so there's a big difference between a 2,500 square foot house and a, two floors of 2,500, which is 5,000 square foot house. Slightly different. So we need, we're going to need the applicant, and it sounds like Mr. O'Rourke is not ready to speak about that, because I've always been in the impression that it was a 2,500 to 3,000 square foot house, which is a lot smaller than a 5,000 square foot house.
Right.
Plus a garage, plus a finished basement.
Garage is part of the square footage.
I know, it's just more stuff, anyway.
Unless it's separate.
More stuff. Anyway, good point. Next.
Um, so on the next page, where was the same thing Dennis had to say about the North Island Fire Department? Um, I agree with that. On the ninth page, the third paragraph down, um, it looks like the, in the middle of the paragraph, it says, "The final SWPP will address treatment of the water quality, of the water quality volume infiltration required runoff reduction volume and attenuation of any peak volume flow rates for the 1, 10, and 100-year storm events." And the 1 has been removed, and I'd like to know why.
Turn to a pager on, again?
Nine, but it might be eight in yours, might be 10 in yours. Paragraph starts a preliminary SWPP.
The applicant struck that one in their edits. Glenn Watson's comment.
Mike, Mike.
Again, this came right out of the DEIS and FEIS text, so I, that's where I got that from.
I don't think we asked for that. Like, maybe Steve did, but I didn't.
That's the edit I got from your, your office.
Oh, Margaret may have done it, then. Okay. Regardless, the, the- There are more and more women bossing me around, my wife, my partners, and my, my daughter, who's my boss, and, um, at any rate, by understanding, and I'll be happy to have Ron correct me, is that the 1-year store doesn't need to be attenuated.
It's a design volume that's used. I, I think we'll just leave it in, and we understand what we need to do for site plan review.
Right.
Right.
Okay. So in the last paragraph on this same page, it says, "A final SWPP must be approved by the town as part of subdivision and site plan approval." And what I want to know is, is that the town board, or is that the planning board? Being the town?
Typically, what's done, those SWPs are reviewed by my office. Um, depending on the project side, they're also reviewed by DEC, um, so-
So you as the town engineer-
Yeah.
Are the, represent the town in that particular instance?
Right.
Perfect.
And very likely, there's a higher level of authority at the DEC as well.
Okay. Just trying to figure out what our responsibilities are.
Okay.
Um, so we already talked about the 198th century barn. Page 11, there are bullet points. The second one says, this is referring to what the HOA can do. Um, and at the second bullet point, it says, "Restricting the amount of development that can occur on a lot." And I'd just like to know what that means. Like, what kind of development can occur on a lot other than these houses?
It's the amount of, yeah, the amount of, like, disturbance that can occur.
Yeah, they're limited to a, a small size of a yard, of a lawn. They're limited in the extent of tree clearing that's permitted within individual lots. This is a generic statement, but it's covered elsewhere in terms of more specifics. Might be in the bylaws, I can't recall.
Yes.
Okay, because in my head, development means a building.
We could change it to disturbance.
There's also prohibition on outside pools, things of that sort.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, no swimming pools, minimal tree clearing, certain-
I think what she's saying is, she'd like to be enumerated about what can and can't be done on these lots, as opposed to a statement that is vague enough to basically defer authority to the HOA. So can we just make this more specific about what is not allowed versus what is allowed at the property, the individual homes?
Well, again, I think, I think they may be here elsewhere, but we'll make sure it's in there.
Thank you.
While, while we're on the size now, I'd like an answer.
Why don't you go to the mic, please? Why don't you go to the mic?
While we're, while we're on the, uh, the size, um, I, um, I sent a, a text to Yuli, who's watching this on YouTube. Uh, if he had an answer on that square footage of the 2,500 to 3,000, he said that refers to the house, not the footprint.
Good.
Good, okay.
Thank you.
That's great.
So we'll move the word "footprint" there.
Make sure that it's clear. Okay, so, my next question has to do with the HOA. I read, I went back to the DEIS and read through the HOA rules. And it talks about how the HOA can, um, approve additions and decking and a patio and stuff like that. But the way that it's written in, in the HOA document, it seems as though the town's building inspector, et cetera, or planning, or, you know, whoever makes those decisions, isn't going to be consulted. So that, that doesn't make any sense, right? Any, if somebody wants to add a deck to their house, they would have to go to the building inspector, correct? Okay.
But in this instance, they would have to get, um, review by the HOA. Right, unless that is obtained, they won't be able to file for a building permit.
Okay, so that, so the HOA has to prove it first, and then you file for the building permit, but it doesn't eliminate, it's, it's not like its own universe where the town has no say. That's what I'm trying to find out. Okay, also, like, just as a, as a side point, so if the size of the house is only going to be 2,500 to 3,000 square feet, if you have a 3,000 square foot house and you want to put a deck on it, then you can't do it, right? If the limit is 3,000. Like, is there going to be, over time, will, you know, are, are we frozen?
It's also, it's also, that's a total of all, both floors, not the footprint, the 2,500 to 3,000.
But let's say you build a house that's 3,000 square feet, and you live there for five years, and then you think, you know, I'd really like to have a deck here. So you want to add a deck. But are you, are you going to be allowed to add to the house from what you have with this 3,000 square feet, or are you just, are we frozen at that size? It does, because it has, it has footings.
The number that's contained in the EIS documents just refers to the project sponsor's expectation as to house size. It, the, the town has no limitation.
The building inspector would make that determination, then, if somebody wanted to-
Again, it, it just goes back to the issue of square foots and footprint, and, and it would kick into the town's regulations in terms of what applies. But there's no limit from the town side as to what size that house can be.
So, if we're saying these houses are going to be 2,500 to 3,000 square feet, that, that isn't necessarily then, unless we specify that that's all it can be.
Unless it's specifically in the HOA documents, it's not, it's not going to be picked up by this board unless you identify it as a condition.
Yeah, so I, I think that might be something we want to think about.
Okay, good point, very good point.
Okay.
Very good point.
And then I guess the only other thing for tonight, which isn't exactly, um, part of this document, but is part of the submissions that we got for tonight, is there's a letter from the Hudson Hounds Land Trust, um, in which a suggestion is made that, um, lots, that some of the lots that are around the pond be moved to an area that was previously disturbed. And I, um, it doesn't have to happen tonight, but I'd like to hear from the applicant, if they did, since they did have houses there before, why they wouldn't want to take that suggestion to have houses there again and open the wildlife quarter a little further. So I, I don't want an answer right now, but that is a question that we'll probably ask next time. And that's it for me tonight.
Thank you. Neil, anything?
I just had, all my questions were sort of focused around the nature of the, and the parameters of the HOA agreement, so I'm going to hold off, and I think we'll have some comments to, um, I want to flesh out my questions a little bit better.
Totally fine. Heidi, now with staying what you said earlier, do you want an opportunity to comment on the deck?
Sure, sure, yep. Um, so I, I just object to various parts of this document that seemed more of, much more reflective of the applicant's views than hopefully the board's. Um, for example, and I don't, so I'm looking at a draft of 511, but I, it may have been subsequently amended. You know, I don't think we should be saying that approximately 78%-
Do you have a page number for us?
Uh, it's page four.
Page four.
Page four. Um, I don't think, I, it's not my view. I think we should certainly condition the statement that 78% of the project site would be preserved as permanent open space. I mean, I think that we should make it clear that that's, you know, in our view, that's the least developable portion of the site. And not, because the way this is worded, it makes it sound like, you know, uh, this is a great conservation subdivision, and that's not my personal view. I don't think it complies with the conservation subdivision rules for our town. Um, at least not in intent. I know that our counsel has said that he thinks it complies, but I disagree. Um, so on page five, uh, uh, similarly, the portion that says, "According to the project sponsor, the protected land to be part of the conservation easement will provide the following functions," I do not think it protects important habitat and wildlife corridors. I totally disagree with that. Um, all those bullets, I think, are not reflective of my views, at any rate, any of them. It does not preserve and protect Omar Pond, it does not protect the buffer, it does not provide a block of undisturbed contiguous forest. Um, it does not preserve the, any areas, uh, that are historic or, you know, um, culturally, you know, uh, important for our town. So I disagree with all that language, and I would reconstruct it, and I just don't, haven't had the ti, you know, we just got this, and I haven't had the time to suggest edits for your, uh, review and comment. Um, I don't think it's fair for our consultants to provide us, considering, you know, I have a very busy schedule myself, so I would prefer to receive, uh, remarks from our consultants more than a few days or a week before we have to, uh, opine on them. That would be really courteous of them. I mean, it is not, in my opinion, uh, fair on a project of this size to get comments that close to the time when we have to make edits. So, I mean, I would ask for more time, and I will abs-
I think, I think we, I think we've, I think we've covered the topic of the time.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I am available for any special meeting at any time.
Right, so let me just restate again what the plan is. We have received a document on May 11th.
Yeah.
Most board members have looked at those comments and have comments to provide.
I'm providing my comments.
I, right, but we're going to have a revised version. It will be in our books by June 2nd for pickup. We will then, it will not change again, right, Aaron?
Here's my question, though. If, uh, I'm supposed to get a revised version on June 2nd, when am I going to have Heidi's comments by? Because I'll need to make-
Heidi's comments are going to come in this meeting on, on June 16th.
I will provide my comments, but I'm telling you that this, saying that this reflects the, you know, it protects wildlife corridors, does not reflect my-
It's in the, it's in, it's in the DEIS and FEIS. I took language right out of those documents. This is not from me. It's from the record that you've approved.
Let me, let me make, I need, I need to have, Adam, I know you're pinch hitting tonight for Steve, so if you don't feel comfortable answering my question, that's fine. At the meeting last month, there was a four to two vote to accept the FEIS. Okay, four to two vote. Uh, two members of the board voted against it. When it comes to voting for the finding statement, which we have to vote on, correct? We have to vote to accept, to accept the finding statement. Is that a correct statement, Adam?
Correct.
Okay, so I, would you assume that those who voted against the, accepting the FEIS would also vote against the finding statement?
I mean, it's an assumption.
Okay, is it a, well, what, well, guess what I'm saying is, and Heidi, I'm not putting it in any spot whatsoever. I'm just saying that if you voted against the, accepting the FEIS, chances, yes?
I'm sorry, just asking for an answer.
No.
Okay, sorry. Chances are, one would not be supportive of the language in the finding statement, because the finding statement is derivative from the FEIS. I think it's perfectly appropriate for you to register comments about what language change you'd like to see in the, the finding statement, if you would be, you find yourself looking to vote in favor of the, of the finding statement. If you're opposed to the finding statement because it's derivative of the FEIS, I suspect we will not be able to make language changes amenable to you to get you comfortable with the finding statement. And so, again, we can, we absolutely will give you, and the whole- And so, again, we can, we absolutely will give you and the whole board a clean version on June 2nd. And then the, it will stay solid and unchanged. We will meet again on June 16th, and then we will provide more comments. But I think you should be mindful that, again, as Aaron has said a few times, he took the FEIS and boiled down to this memo. So if one is opposed, was opposed to accepting the FEIS, chances are one would be opposed to what's in this. Go ahead, sir.
That's fair. Yeah, I mean, and just in my defense, from last month, on April 21st, you voted to accept. I had, I took two and a half weeks to write this on eight, eight years of, of materials. I worked as fast as I could. I'm sorry that it wasn't enough time.
There's no reason to apologize. I think, I think that we, we always get stuff around two-week mark, so this is not, I think what we're more concerned about is the edits in between that came in today at whatever time you said. That's, I think that's, that's, that's a bridge too far for all of us, even with day jobs. So I think, so I think if there, if you have any more specific comments on the language you'd like to see, Heidi, let's do that now.
Okay, and by the way, I was not criticizing you. I was just saying, I just, I would prefer a little more time, and I know my edits may not be accepted because I was one of only two people that voted against the, you know, the project in its current form, in its current form. I hope that's clear. I voted against the project in its current form, not against the project as, as a whole. So, anyway, on page, I recognize that my edits may not be accepted, but I just would like more time to submit them to, for consideration and comment. And I wasn't criticizing you at all. On page six, I disagree that the projects, well, the project sponsor did slightly reduce the scale of the proposed project. I don't think that we should, in my opinion, the board should not make this so pro-applicant. It's, it appears that, from this language, that the project sponsor was extremely responsive to the public comments, and I do not agree with that.
Which section are you referring to?
So that's on, in my, in the version I'm looking at, that's on page six, in the paragraph that begins, "In response to public comments on the DEIS, the project sponsor reduced the scale of the proposed project." I mean, I, in my opinion, and I, I'll try to make this quick because I recognize I'm taking time. On page 15, you know, there's, there's language about how much of the site would be lawn and landscaping, 30.4 acres would be lawn and landscaping. I, you know, that, that actually was a surprise to me because I thought the vast majority of the developed area of the site would be maintained as forest, as, you know, so there would be houses in the midst, you know, kind of like what you see on East Mountain Road to some degree, as you approach, you know, some of the trails on that road. So I, I, that was confusing to me. But again, I, I, I can propose edits, but I, that doesn't, so that's like, I would prefer if that would clarify as to how many acres of the site will be houses, how many acres will be maintained, like, house dropped into a forested landscape, kind of like along the lines of what you see on East Mountain Road now, and how many acres of lawn and lands, in quote landscaping, which I don't know if that reflects like native land, native plants or not that would be. So, but I haven't had, you know, an opportunity, given the time we have, to propose specific edits, but these are my comments.
I think the reason the documents didn't include acreage of houses is because they're just, they're not all designed. So what they did provide was, and this is all out of the FEIS summary, was 30.4 acres would be lawn and landscaping, based on, I guess, the restrictions that are going to be allowed per lot to allow lawns and landscaping. So they did some calculations to get that number. That's, I think that's my answer, as far as I know. If the applicant wants to clarify, they can, but I think it might be difficult to quantify houses at this stage.
I'll just add in that, well, we are saying 7.7 acres would be impervious, so that does include the buildings. And the 30.4 acres, basically, we took the extent of the area of disturbance and just made the worst-case assumption that that could be converted to lawn and landscaping. That does not mean that all those trees will need to be taken down. But if we projected what the maximum area of disturbance is, drew that line around it and calculated the area within it, that's what it works out to. But the project sponsor is committed to preserving every tree that he can as part of his architectural vision.
So 7.7 includes structures and roads and anything else that's impervious?
Ready? Good? Okay, good. All right, Heidi, anything more?
I mean, I'm going to submit edits to the document, but other, not today.
Yeah, right, I'm talking about right, yeah, right, no, no. The door, the door is open. We will wait for a final version. If you have specific edits you want to do on this version, that's fine, but Aaron's going to lock whatever he's got by June 2nd, and that's what we're going to look at on June 16th. Okay, let me run through a few pieces, knowing that we're going to run until about 10 o'clock tonight. I know the, maybe, we may even go a little longer for our friends from Hudson Valley Shakespeare Festival. I know we have a lot to talk about. Let me just run through some topics. This is off the original, Aaron. Page five, first paragraph at the top, sentence starts, "At this time, the project sponsor is not designated the easement holder, but..." "I would like a sentence inserted about what if nobody is found to accept this easement." I don't know what that is, but I'm guessing that they will not get site plan approval if they don't have it. "I'd like a sentence inserted about what if they do not have someone to accept this easement." Secondly, bottom of page five, second from the bottom paragraph, the paragraph starts, "In order to facilitate the proposed project..." Dot, dot, dot. You with me? On mine, it's page five. "In order to facilitate the proposed project..." Comma, "The project sponsor seeks approval from the Phillips Town Town Board, blah, blah, blah." Yeah?
Yeah, got it.
Okay. At the, the sentence that ends, "Since this parcel would remain commercial, would not be part of the HOA that would manage the proposed subdivision. I would like a sentence inserted about what if the zoning change is not granted? I would like clarity about what will change about this project if the zoning change is not granted by our friends on the town board. Does that mean the number of houses are fewer? What is, what is put in if that's not accepted?" I think that's an important statement to have. Okay? Clear? Okay. And similarly, I'd like that to be carried over to the table that's on page seven. There's a ta, table that says, has a column called "Net Change." I'd like some that be, that defines the lots that are, would be in this, if the zoning change is not granted. Again, because this assumes that the zoning change is granted, and there's no mention of that. In the wisdom of the town board, they may not grant the zoning change. We don't know.
Would a footnote be good?
I would accept a footnote.
Okay.
Thank you. You okay? Okay. Page 11, and I, there's a couple of places, and I think I understand your reasoning. We've got a couple of places where, this is a paragraph called, "As depicted on the FEIS, FEIS plan, comma, the closest proposed home to Omer Pond is approximately 171 feet from its edge." At times, we talk about the 171 feet from the pond, other times we talk about the 140-foot buffer. I believe the buffer is from the house, eh?
No.
No.
The buffer, the 140 feet is the, from the pond edge to the lot lines around the pond. The 171 is from the pond edge to the closest house.
Yeah, I think we just need to be much more crisp in when we're using it, because I think we use them, if not interchangeably, in ways that are confusing the public, okay?
Sure.
Thank you. And there's a number of places where those numbers are cited. Page 13, in the last paragraph on the first section, starts, "Due to the distance between Clove Creek and the proposed project's limit of disturbance..." Dot, dot, dot. Talks, it ends with, "In addition, the project sponsor is committed to monitor Clove Creek while construction is in progress. I would like some clarity about how this monitoring will be communicated to the town, how often, by whom, and to whom will they be communicating this monitoring." Okay? And I know you can't make that data up, they're going to have to give it to you, but...
Right, well, I, I did email you back when you sent these comments first.
I know, but the public didn't pass your emails.
Yeah, the issue is, the answer is, and the short answer is, as part of site plan approval, you can have conditions specifying that protocol.
Then it's fine to insert a sentence that says, "During site plan approval, the plan board will define the who, the what, the when, the where, the why."
Got it.
Okay. In the second to last paragraph on page 13, paragraph starts, "The proposed project's entrance road must be, must traverse the 100-year flood plain, flood plain permit will be sought for the development of the entrance. I would like a sentence that explains what if the permit is not granted, and who is the grantor of said permit." Okay? And so I'm going really fast, I apologize, Aaron. You with me?
Yep.
Okay, 14, third paragraph, starts with, "Some residential activities such as lawn maintenance and pest control, blah, blah, blah. Pesticide and herbicide use will be strictly regulated by the HOA. Regulated or prohibited."
So I added a new sentence or two to the edited version to clarify this. So, and this is all from the bylaws, and I'll read it out loud if you want.
Please.
So pesticide and herbicide use will be strictly regulated by the HOA, period. Then it says, "According to the draft of the bylaws and general rules and regulations of the HOA contained in the DEIS, the use of pesticides and herbicides will be prohibited unless the holder of the conservation easement otherwise expressly consents prior to use, and unless such use is legal and in accordance with all applicable laws, rules, and regulations, and the manufacturer's directions."
Love it, thank you. And I'd like, there's another place where my zoning point comes into effect about if they don't get the zoning change. Bottom of 17, starts with, "To facilitate the proposed project, the project sponsor seeks approval from the Phillips Town Town Board to change the zoning, blah, blah, blah." I'd like inserted there again, "How many houses would the applicant be allowed if the zoning law change isn't approved?" I want that clarified. This is basically your footnote you're going to put in the table. And that is the end of my comments. Okay? All right, thank you, Aaron. Clear on what our plan is?
I have one more thing I want to say, because I, as we were going through those things, I remembered. So we've been really clear about the fact that we are not going to entertain any kind of access to this development from East Mountain Road, North, or from Horton Road. So I just want to restate that, you know, that if, if the DOT says no, I, I think for me, that's the end. I'm just putting it out there.
Certainly, there's a response required for that.
Certainly a risk the applicants take.
Yeah. Did you want to say something, Glenn?
Qualify the emergency access.
Well, other than the emergency access, but I mean, for regular access, like we've been, it's been represented to us that that will not happen as regular access, and we just, and what I don't want to see happen is that, you know, at the end of the day, it's like, here's this project, and we were going to get, you know, access from Route 9, but we couldn't, so now you have to grant us relief onto East Mountain Road, North.
Okay. Well said, thank you for that clarification. All right, thank you, Aaron.
I'll give you a redlined word version, June 2nd. Sound good?
June 2nd, redlined version with the edits as stated.
As stated tonight.
That will give the board two weeks, as stated tonight. That will give the board two weeks to give you comments at the June 16th meeting.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah? Okay. Thank you. All right, we're going to turn to Hudson Valley Shakespeare Festival, our second Hudson project of the night. What we're going to have, since Steve Gabba is not, we originally slated tonight that we would do three things, the first of which was to have Steve Gabba walk us through the SECRAS assessment process, positive and negative, so we understand those criteria. Steve's not here tonight, and council's not prepared for that conversation, so we're going to hold that off until next month. We're going to, the second thing we're going to do is have the applicant and their team walk us through a few areas that I think require some further explanation. They've done many months' worth of research, and they've answered many questions through, from the public sessions, so we're going to have them walk through those topics. We're going to go till 10 o'clock, we'll get as far as we can, and either we'll get through all that. My guess is we're only going to get to that. If we get done with that, and there are six topics, or five topics I have listed, if we get done with that, we will then start going by board member about how they're feeling about the project as we move to a... As, as we move to a plan, I say a plan, because I don't know if we're going to get there after tonight, a plan to vote on June about SECRAS. It may not happen until July if we can't get enough time for this board to discuss. We also are missing a couple of folks tonight, but the plan, as I've stated for several months, was discussion tonight, vote in June, but we didn't have enough detail last month for you guys to share all your facts, so we're going to get that on the table, then this board's got to talk, then we've got to vote. So if that takes to July, it takes to July. We'll do it, we'll take the time it needs, as several board members have said, this is a very, very large and important project, and it deserves its time. So Dan, you have the floor.
Thanks very much, Mr. Chairman. I'll be brief. We have our entire development team here tonight, so I won't take the time to introduce them all, because if they're called upon, they'll introduce themselves. There are two new people here tonight, Nick Goldsmith, who is a tensile engineer, and Paul Woodell, our hydrologist, this is his first time here in person, I think, our hydrogeologist. But Mr. Chris Davis is here, Davis McCallum, and Katie Lieberman for the client. And Mark Lucasey from Tectonic is here as well. Sorry, left out Mark. What we have here behind me is an illustration of the current plan. When we were here, our May 5 submission really was in response to the question your boards raised during the April 21st meeting, which built upon our 62 responses to the, for that April 21st meeting. So the two slides which will keep up sort of ever-present are the side-by-side of the initial plan and the reduced plan, and behind me is the reduced plan with the legend removed, but with captions as to what the different items are. And that'll be a point of reference for every one of the, Jan Johansson's going to walk you through the essential points we think we need to make tonight, and the call upon any of our consultants specifically to address questions or points within that topic. So with that said...
Before we launch into people's talk, let me just restate for the public, because I mentioned this to you on the phone, there are five areas I personally think we need to go into some detail on.
And that's, we're going to take those...
But I'm stating them for the, those viewing at home, not just for, yeah. So one is the water consumption, that was a topic raised with great detail. The second is the bridge and the alternatives to the bridge. There were a number of discussions about alternatives. Thirdly, noise. Fourth, light. And the fifth, siting of the tent. Now, my colleagues may have other ones they want you to go deeper on, but those are the five I think are ones that deserve some airtime.
When we talked about the bridge, we also talked about the alternative, people that recommended we consider alternatives up from Snake Hill Road or Phillips Brook. We, we have boards for all of that, and the boards are illustrative and support the May 5 submission. So what, what the boards will show is, in pictures, is what we've written for you in the May 5 submission. So with that, I'll turn it over to Jan Johansson, our planning consultant, who's behind me, and he'll take it from here.
Thank you, Dan. Good evening, thank you. A lot of the materials, the boards that you're going to see tonight, not new information, they're just larger, in larger format. We heard at the last meeting that, you know, rightfully so, there's a lot going on on these plans, you wanted it in a, in a larger format, so we're not presenting really new information tonight. Some things are being highlighted. So, nothing, nothing new. And you have these in packets in front of you as well. So the, the first image, you know, this is a plan that should be familiar to you. What we were asked to do at the last meeting was just highlight where the removals are, you know, our reduced scope of work. So the footprints of the former hotel and indoor theater are dashed in red. They're here, and here. This being the former indoor theater, and this being the former hotel. So this plan hasn't changed in any other way, other just to highlight where those removals took place. Jumping into, into water... Jumping into, uh, into water, water demand, there's a... Sure. You got it.
I thought the parking lot was reconfigured, too.
Um, great point. The parking lot has been reconfigured, the parking lot and the driveway has been moved completely out of the wetland buffer. The number of parking spaces in that lot is the same, but it got slid up the hill and further out of the buffer. So that, that is reflected, not in red, but is reflected on the side-by-side comparison that you should have on your packet. You could see how the parking lot and the driveway slid out of the buffer, uh, which was a, you know, a comment, uh, by the conservation board and the plan board. So moving on to the, uh, water demand, uh, we provided this, this graphic off to the right, this bar graph, and it's, the left-hand side is, uh, a water demand comparison between, um, the 2005 PDD, the as-of-right plan, um, the existing condition as it stands with the golf course in operation as of last year, and then the proposed action. And the proposed action is then further broken down into the existing condition with Hudson Valley Shakespeare in operation without the golf course use. That's that darker, uh, green. And then our Phase 1 plan with the, uh, the tent theater going in, and then finally the lighter blue up top, the full build-out. So just comparing those numbers, thought this graphic would be helpful. Um, the as-of-right plan, fifteen thousand, three hundred and twenty gallons per day. The existing condition with the golf club in operation, nine thousand, eight hundred and twenty gallons per day. The proposed action, at full build-out, thirteen thousand, three hundred and fifty-three gallons per day.
Eyes not so good anymore.
And just the large takeaway here is, when you compare the, um, the proposed action to the existing condition, um, there is a, let's see, seventeen point eight percent less than the existing condition. Uh, when you compare the as-of-right plan to the full build-out, um, we are twelve point eight percent less. Did I say that right, Paul?
Yeah.
No, I don't think I did. I think I, I think I messed that up.
But we can read it, we can read this out.
Okay.
You don't have to read it to us.
Okay, I got, so...
So, Jan, here's my question for you that I don't understand about this graph. The, the, the left-hand side is demand, I got demand.
Okay.
It's clear what you're saying, that demand is lower than you had permission, and, you know, it's more than what it is now, but it's not as much as it will, it was approved in the year 2005.
Correct.
That's demand. I'm trying to understand, 'cause frankly, it's more relevant, supply.
Okay.
Given that we're in the middle of a real financial crisis in America, the concept of supply and demand is actually really, relevant on everyone's brains these days. So, I'm trying to understand the supply side, not the demand side.
And that's what the right-hand side is.
Right, so I can't read the right-hand, I can't, I've stared at this graph now, I don't understand what's on here, why don't you explain this to, or maybe the gentleman, uh, who's sneaking in would like to explain. 'Cause I, I don't understand this graph, and because the, the folks who came out here to talk were neighbors, their issues were not about your demand as much as they're worried their supply is running out. So walk us through this, sir. Introduce, introduce yourself.
Paul Woodell, GeoDesign, thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the opportunity. So, as Jan indicated, the right-hand side of this graph is a depiction of, um, essentially the water balance. The water balance is a comparison of the demand that will be, uh, that, that is the withdrawal of potable groundwater from the ground in comparison to the recharge of the groundwater aquifer. So, the, um, the town's zoning code provides a method to calculate the recharge of the groundwater basin. It's based upon, uh, the aerial distribution of various soil types, and it actually provides a formula right in the zoning code to calculate the recharge to the groundwater basin. That is the, the amount of water from precipitation and snowmelt that goes into the, into the ground, into the bedrock, and provides, um, a source for withdrawal by private potable wells, by public wells, et cetera. So, the tall part of that, the tall dark blue column is a graphical representation of what one ninety-nine thousand gallons per day looks like. That one ninety-nine thousand is the number that is calculated based on the, based on the town zoning ordinance, and that is the recharge, not only for the site, but for the contributing upland basin, which is to the east of Route Nine. So, the, the basin that gathers, um, groundwater that is, is potential for withdrawal is not just the site, obviously, it's based on topography, and that's how that's defined. So if we compare that to the, the little rectangle on the far right, that number thirteen three fifty-three is our calculated demand under the proposed condition. Now, the, again, back to the zoning ordinance, um, there's a requirement in the ordinance that when you do this water balance comparison, recharge versus demand, you have to take your calculated demand and multiply it by six. That, that factor is a safety factor that is built into the, the ordinance such that, um, there's enough available groundwater to dilute nitrogen loading from septic effluent. The assumption is that all water that you take out of the ground goes back into the ground as septic effluent, it's a, it's a simplified assumption. But now you've got nitrogen loading, you wanna dilute that to below the state groundwater quality standard for nitrogen. In fact, that six times multiplier is designed to bring the nitrogen loading down to fifty percent of the state's standard. Okay? So that's the center column, the, the, kind of the brownish column. That is the green column on the far right, our demand times six. And the idea here is to simply represent these numbers in a graphical sense. The, the takeaway here is our demand, thirteen three fifty-three, which by the way, is full build-out, Phase 1 and Phase 2, and it is a worst-case scenario demand, that is, that's all the, all the, um, uses of potable water on the property being used at the same time, worst-case scenario. Multiplied by six is that center column, and it, just illustratively, it's significantly less than the recharge potential of the basin.
Two questions, Paul. One, how did you get the hundred, the two hundred thousand number?
Mm-hmm.
And secondly, which I think is harder, is this conceptual challenge that the residents had.
Sure.
And I, let's just assume it's the ones in the immediate vicinity, the Phillips Town, Phillips Brook Road, and the guys right across the street on, I always forget the name of the short-axis road that's right across, no, it's not Free, it's in Free?
Coleman?
Coleman, Coleman. So let's just say those houses. Let, let's do the second question first, it's harder for, 'cause there's no walls underground.
Correct.
It's not like the two hundred thousand gallons is only for what's happening in this property, like, there's no barrier, there's no borders underneath the ground. Well, maybe there are, but there are no property borders. So, a bunch of different homes are sharing this two hundred thousand gallons, and maybe it's more than two hundred, 'cause it goes beyond, but there's lots of little houses, you know, almost surrounding, with the exception of the west, this property. And the, the public is saying, "We're worried," and they gave a couple of examples of where someone said, I don't know if it's, I have no validation, but they said, oh, they ran out of water, or a well went dry, who knows what's true, but that's what was said. They're all saying, "We're all sharing this two hundred thousand, and you may be using eighty thousand of it, using your, your analysis here, that only leaves a hundred and twenty for the rest of us, and we're all worried." That's what they're saying. I'm not saying whether, I'm trying to understand the validity of that, because obviously, that's one of the things that was mostly, not mostly, but often said to us, "We're gonna run out of water." So can you help this board understand whether this two hundred thousand is enough not only for the eighty of the property, but for the other people who've gotta share, and again, I'm, I know you're probably gonna hate the fact I'm using these numbers, but there's one twenty left for everybody else. So help us understand.
The, the first point that I'll, that I'll, that I'll make is that we have to be careful that the eighty thousand number, the center column, is, um, it's, it's a number that's prescribed by the zoning code. The actual consumption is thirteen thousand gallons per day. And so if we, the, the right way to look at this graph is to compare the little green rectangle on the right to the big blue rectangle on the left.
That leaves a hundred and eighty-seven thousand for everyone else. So whatever, whatever is, can you just give us some guidance about how to think about the, the load for everybody else?
Sure.
Because that, to me, seems like a concern that the neighbors have.
Sure. So the first thing I'll point out is the fact that, under the Phase 1 development, and that brings us back to the left-hand graph, under the Phase 1 development, the consumption will be less than the existing condition.
We, we, we're not having a phased, this, this secret is about full hundred percent build, so, let's, let's jump off that, 'cause I think that's gonna get us confused.
So there, so there is an increase in, in projected consumption compared to the existing condition, um, at, at a total of thirteen thousand. Now, that difference between the existing condition and the projected condition is about thirty-five hundred gallons per day. I wanna try to put that into perspective, this is the way I like to think about that. It seems like a big number. Thirty-five hundred gallons per day is about two point four gallons per minute, if you divide by fourteen forty minutes per day, right? Two point four gallons per minute is about half of what an average faucet or spigot discharges, if you turn on a garden hose, that's five or six gallons a day. So we're about half of that. That's the additional demand compared to the existing condition. Now, I'm presuming right now that the existing condition is kind of status quo, there, there, you know, there's not, um, there's not complaints about wells currently under the existing condition.
Well, that's, with all due respect, we did hear at least two people come and say, "Boy, in the last couple of years, we had a couple wells run dry," which is, which is why we're asking these questions about where the two hundred thousand came from.
Right.
And then related, you'll have to advise us, what analyses would one do? Let's say you wanted complete certainty, without any shred, I'm not saying one would do this reasonably.
I'm not sure that that's possible from a scientific perspective.
Ninety-five percent confidence level, pick something you'd feel comfortable with.
Yeah.
But with some assurance that the, the neighbor wouldn't run out of water, what analytical activity would one do to learn that?
I wanna go back to your first question, the one ninety-nine, the, the reason that's, that, that comes from the zoning ordinance. That number is a calculation based on, um, um, a prescribed methodology for determining the recharge of groundwater basin. And it comes, it goes back to an older document that was prepared for the town by, by Chazen, um, which was a much larger groundwater study that kind of looked at the, looked at the town.
Give the year?
Two thousand and five, I believe, yeah. It was a large document, that, some language from that document was pulled out and put into the zoning ordinance when, when the, when the aquifer overlay was designed. So that's where that one ninety-nine comes from. There is an increase in demand, I believe that the increase is not insubstantial, but it is a small percentage of the current usage, right? So, you know, we're increasing by roughly thirty-six percent at full build-out. That is a worst-case scenario, um, and the applicant is aware of the potential for there to be impact to off-site wells, and they're, they're willing to mitigate if a circumstance, um, arises that can be proven to be a result, um, of additional usage, there are mitigation strategies to deal with that. I don't think it's gonna be an issue. There's a couple of reasons. First of which is, the, there's two new wells that are proposed, one of which is for the single-family home. Um, that well is, um, farther north compared to the irrigation wells that were the issue back in nineteen ninety-nine, when a pumping test was, was run, and some of the neighboring off-site wells were impacted. This new, single-family residence well is farther north, a greater distance, and significantly lower in demand than the irrigation wells. These irrigation wells run at, I think, fifty, sixty, seventy gallons per minute for seventy-two hours straight, that's a tremendous amount of water. None of these new wells are proposed to be operated under that kind of a load. The, the second new well that's proposed is somewhat interior to the Hudson Valley Shakespeare Festival property as a whole, significantly farther north and somewhat farther west from Route Nine compared to existing wells. We have to remember that there are existing wells on the property, they're being pumped all the time. And yes, there's anecdotal conversation that maybe some, some wells are impacted, there's a lot of variables that can, that can kind of degrade the performance of a well. They can degrade naturally over time, many of these homes are very, um, are older, and therefore their well systems are older, they're shallow, their, their pumps may not be performing at the same level, well screens can clog up over time with bacterial loading and things of that nature. So, th- there are a lot of variables that can impact a well. I don't believe the additional demand that's proposed here is enough to, um, to tax the hundred and ninety-nine thousand gallons per day of available recharge.
Okay, other questions on water?
I have a question.
Thank you.
Just trying to keep it simple here. Regarding the, uh, surrounding areas.
Yes.
Is there a way to calculate, uh, let's pick a, a half-mile radius around the center of this site, the number of houses, the projected use, water use per house, times that compared to the two hundred thousand gallons available?
In fact, um, the projected use of those homes has already been deducted from that one ninety-nine.
What is that?
Uh, I would have to look at my calculations, but the, what we did was, we estimated the number of houses primarily in the upland recharge basin to the east, where, you know, I think it was maybe somewhere on the order of sixty-five houses or so.
Okay.
Correct, within that basin.
That map exists in the...
That's right.
We, we illustrated that.
We, we have that?
Yes, yes. And then, and then, it's, it's discussed in the water balance discussion. So, we, we, we estimated the number of homes, we estimated the number of bedrooms, calculated the consumption of all those homes, and subtracted it from the total basin calculation to get the one ninety-nine.
That, the number of homes, the area that the stats related to, can you give us an idea, is it a half-mile, a quarter-mile?
Uh, within the, the dimensions of the basin itself?
Well, no, the affected homes, that could come...
Well, I, I don't wanna use the word affected, the, the, the number of homes inside the basin, the basin itself is, you know, maybe a half a mile to the east. That's kind of where the topography climbs and then levels off, and that's gonna define the groundwater divide. So, that, that distance, I think, is roughly a half a mile to the east of, of Route Nine and to the east of the site.
So within that, that area, I'm not gonna say radius, 'cause I guess it's not a radius for a site. Count the number of houses.
Correct.
Anticipated usage per household.
Correct, multiply all those together.
Right, and that value, gallons, is...
I, I wish I could give, I wish I could give you the number, but I can tell you that it's not included in that one ninety-nine. So that, that, the total recharge of the basin was a, a number higher than a hundred and ninety-nine thousand.
We're mixing in supply and demand.
Correct.
He's asking about demand, and you're stating supply. So he's saying...
Plenty of supply, but...
So the original supply figure...
I guess, but my challenge is, the supply is, is, as derived number from an '05 study, as opposed to, it's not a new, it's not like we...
Two thousand and twenty-two.
He backed out all the houses, the, the existing house demand has been, has been taken out of the picture, so that's available.
That's right.
The two hundred is not demand, the two hundred thousand is supply.
Supply. But the available supply for Hudson Valley Shakespeare Festival, one ninety-nine, has accounted for the use of all the other houses, all the other houses in the basin, already.
For clarity, can that be delineated, shown, or a...
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It's, it's gonna be another column, so the total basin recharge is even bigger than one ninety-nine, and then we can show the demand of the existing houses in the basin as a little piece on the top. Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
Shows some clarity to it.
Absolutely.
If, if it was there and I understood it, that question would have not come up.
Very good.
Dennis Moore?
That's it right now.
Kim?
Yeah, so I have a, just sort of a practical question. So this Chazen study, I, I was on the stormwater board when they did that study, and, you know, the discussions and stuff like that, and one of the things they said to us at the time was that we were lucky to be in the northeast because there's so much rain. So it's a two thousand and five study, so that's, you know, seventeen years ago. How often should a town revisit that information? Like, is that old information?
You know, my experience with studies like that is, you know, they are in part based upon, um, historic weather data, and, you know, and so, again... in part based upon, um, historic weather data, and, you know, and so a, a given study can't predict precipitation in the future, for example, so utilizes data that exists already, right? Um, so, um, I, I would wanna read it in more detail and see whether there's any discussion in, in that two thousand and five study of, you know, climate change or things like that. I'm, I'm sure it was a recognizable sort of circumstance even back in two thousand and five, whether or not that's really built into the zoning code, I don't know. Um, but, you know, suffice it to say that, uh, you know, perhaps every twenty, twenty-five years, thirty years, something along those lines, it's, it's hard to say. I don't know that there's really any... You know, what you're gonna do is, with a new study, assuming that the, the assumptions are correct in the old study, you're just gonna use slightly more up-to-date weather data, right? So, it'll be ten years newer weather data, for example.
So if, for example, you know, it turned out in, you know, in a ten-year period, there was less, you know, less water coming in, then that would be a concern, but if we had more, then it would potentially be less of a concern, but recharge?
Right.
Then it runs off, so...
But looking, but you know, looking at these numbers, even graphically, there's a, you know, a substantial difference between sup- supply and demand here. The supply significantly outweighs demand, and I don't know that a new study is gonna really change the height of that, that blue bar significantly. It, it could change, certainly, but I don't know that it's gonna be substantial.
Other water questions?
I have a question. So, but if you're upland of the water, so, it seems like you're kind of acknowledging, if I'm understanding you correctly, that if, if houses are located kind of, uh, on an incline from this, from the bulk of the water table, or the water table that's at the, the proposed site, they could, the water could, the water could not go up, could not be as high at that level, right? Like, i- i- in other words, it just seems logical that it could be that the reason we heard testimony that wells were running dry to the east of the si- of the proposed site is because if you're higher in elevation, your, um, well could run dry even if there is enough, uh, water, you know, farther, um, at a lower incline from that site.
Yeah. I, I under- I understand your question. I think what we have to bear in mind is that a, a given well, um, at a given location creates, um, a cone of depression that surrounds it while it's pumping. That, that is, the, the water table surrounding the well becomes depressed, and it actually makes a cone shape, and that's what drives water towards the well to be extracted by the pump. That cone of depression is not going to extend from the Hudson Valley Shakespeare Festival across Route Nine and up the hill. Um, the, you have to think of the basin, uh, on the east side of Route Nine as so- as sort of, um, a, a recharge zone to available groundwater, but that groundwater moves, and it moves downhill topographically, it moves from east to west generally, and so it's, that area, that basin is providing water to the wells at the Hudson Valley Shakespeare Festival property, but the, the idea of whether or not those wells are gonna cause a general overall decline in the elevation of the water table on the east side of Route Nine, that's, that's probably not likely. And also bear in mind, too, that generally speaking, domestic wells in this area are probably two, three, maybe even four hundred feet deep. They might accept, intersect a water table that the static elevation is at thirty feet below grade, fifty feet below grade. So there's generally, in a good well, a hundred and fifty, two hundred and fifty feet of storage in the well casing. You would have to depress the water table over a hundred feet to approach a condition where the pump is injerperative of being exposed to, to air, to, to depressing the water table, and that's just not likely from these wells.
Other questions, Heidi?
No, I answered my question.
Okay, so let's, can we turn to the bridge, then? Yeah.
I'm with that guy.
Do you have any, you have any, you wanna, you have any remarks you wanna make about the bridge and its alternatives? You have more boards? All right, all right.
Yeah.
That's good, that's good.
So the, uh, what Lainey's putting up now, you've seen the upper images, those are in the document. The, the bottom, uh, image, the section is new, um, and it's been further developed and refined as requested by the board. Uh, we engaged tectonic engineering to assist in, in a more, uh, defined, uh, plan. Uh, we've, we were asked to determine how many columns or support posts would be involved. We didn't have the answer to that before, we do now. Um, so let me just go over some, uh, sta- statistics on the bridge. The, uh, the plan shows, um, a hundred and twenty-six-foot-long bridge, span bridge, twenty-four feet wide, uh, with abutments on either end, and four support columns, two on either side of the bridge, and the footprint of those support columns would be three by three. So I know when we were in the field a couple of times, we're trying to get a, somebody asked, are there gonna be no support columns, twenty support columns, what's the size?
Why don't you go stand by that picture, 'cause I mentioned a support column is, you're, you're talk- you're talking about what things right now? Those little things?
Yeah, the posts.
Three feet by three feet?
Yeah.
The print is three feet square, is the actual post three feet square, or just the bottom of it? What's, all of it?
Yeah.
And you just leave a plan, and these four little...
Yeah, you see the, the, the four little squares in the plan view?
Yeah.
So it's completely open side to side and back to forth. Um, we, we were asked, how, how tall is the bridge? How, how high will the span be over, um, the brook, over the ground, as the, there's a little bit of a valley there? Um, the maximum elevation, uh, would be twenty-two feet at the, at the water course. Um, and obviously, it gets, uh, I'm sorry, twenty-six feet at the abutment to the left, twenty-two feet at the water course, and then twenty feet as you approach, um, Snake Hill Road.
Questions?
And then, the next slide has the images, um...
Yeah, you've showed those many times before. So can I, let me ask you a question, I'm just gonna stand here because I, I, there's an image you're missing, which I kinda need to see. So what, what image I'm missing is a version of this for this. I wanna see what this looks like.
From the street?
When you're standing here in the street.
Looking at the...
Looking at the bridge, 'cause what we're, part of our charge is, we've gotta understand, when you're driving here, when you're one of these cars, what is the visual effect of this whole thing? And I can't tell from your drawings what it looks like when I'm driving by here, of what this thing looks like when I'm looking straight at it.
It's gonna look like a road.
Well, whatever it looks like, we should see what it looks like. My second related question is, I cannot tell how big this, sorry folks, how big these things are. What, what is there, as you're driving on this road from the, you're driving west or southwest, you're coming off of nine, down past the house, but down past this family that lives right here, what is the size of this, I don't know what the right term is, what would you call this thing? Abutment, thank you.
Yeah.
I'm a layman. What is the size of this abutment? Is it two individual things? Is it one massive thing? And what are the dimensions of that thing?
It's, it's there, Mr. Chairman, it's twenty feet tall, thirty-six feet long.
Twenty-six feet tall?
From the ground.
From the ground elevation.
And how big is it?
So we'll cover on a bit, but you'll have, it will look honestly very similar to what's already there with these columns, and then you'll have another column.
Well, what I'm, what I'm trying to get, Lainey, is, when I'm driving by, I wanna know what, what this looks like. Is it one huge thing that's twenty-five feet long and twenty-six feet wide? Is it one massive concrete thing? One massive concrete, I, sorry, Celia.
Seventy-four feet, the dimensions of this stuff?
Yeah, I'm talking about seeing this thing right here, but I'm driving by it, so I'm not seeing it in two dimensions, I'm seeing it in three dimensions. There's a thing. It's either two posts, or it's one huge block. Right? You're not, you're, it's, it's, it's what would be there, except it's in, it's way above the ground.
I think I hear you, just to repeat, I'm sorry, I'm not trying to be...
Yeah!
So, sorry. Sorry, sorry. So what you're, so we have a column on either side, the road is going over a stone abutment that is below, so we, you're asking what it looks like underneath the bridge?
Correct, you're, you're driving here, you're going, when you're on this road, you're going to see it, this huge thing.
Right, and so I guess...
This road right here.
It will, it will be stone.
Yeah, but you're not hearing what I'm saying. This is two-dimensional. You're, when you dr-...
It'll be twenty-four feet, it'll be the width of the road. Of course, please.
You're driving here, you're looking, you're looking, oh, hey, there's Chris's nice house, and then you're saying, oh, and I see this big thing, it's twenty-six feet high, and I'm seeing it from here, and this is a big valley, so I'm seeing this huge thing. I wanna see how big that thing is, three-dimensional, from what I'm driving by.
Okay.
Just like I'm driving here, I see it this way. I wanna see what's underneath.
Okay.
You're telling me it's, I'm not seeing this, this is, I'm not seeing this, I'm seeing what's, it's three-dimensional, if you're not yet.
No, I get it, I get it. I mean, it'll have plant here, so you're not, you really won't see a large portion of it, because that's part of the strategy of the planting, so, okay.
You've got these lovely pictures, I'd like to see a picture of what this thing looks like as we're driving by.
How much is the projected above the ground?
The piers?
Well, it will be determined by code. For the heights for the railing, first of all.
Like, so if you were on Snake Hill Road?
Yes, so this is approximately, I believe it's approximately four and a half feet, three and a half feet, it's not...
Yeah, it's like a column.
Yeah, it's like an entry column on a, at a driveway.
It's not much different than that picture on the right.
Exactly.
Yeah, that, that first column is kinda decorative, right?
It's just a scale, if you look at the column.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Um, Mr. Chairman, just to re- reiterate, there's, uh, there's no wetland disturbance associated with the bridge. Uh, the, the wetland buffer disturbance results from, uh, the four columns and the abutments. Uh, there's no lighting on the bridge, and this span bridge was designed specifically to, um, lessen the impact on the wetland and the wetland buffer and reduce fragmentation.
And the decking?
Yeah, of the, of the bridge.
Lainey, do we have information on the decking?
We are currently looking at possibly a wood structure, we're still under, uh, standing what the parameters are for the span, but looking to recreate a, a rural character through that road. We're trying to be respectful of that.
The actual deck, I mean, the decking, the actual surface of the...
What you're driving on.
Right.
Yeah.
Are we paving it, or...
We're looking at possibly a wood surface, that's one of the ones we're studying.
Horizontally played.
Yes, exactly, and it'll be rated for fire trucks, um...
So, so when you, when you have that, when you have a permeable decking, you've got salt and things, you've got salt, snow, mud, things dropping into the wetlands? Have we thought about that?
Yeah, an understructure of some type, to drain it once.
So, let's think of... Yeah, because I'm not, I'm really not, I'm really sort of trying to wrap my head around the idea that we're not, we're going through this wetlands buffer and we're not disturbing anything. These columns are, the entire structure is, almost the entire structure's in the wetland buffer, and...
Yeah, it's elevated, yeah.
It's elevated, but you've got a considerable amount of disturbance there, so now you're introducing cars and trucks that are leaking things and, you know, this is a, this is part of the, the, the picture. Uh, what kind of feedback are you getting from New York State Dams?
Dams? Mark? You, we're switching from the, from the bridge to the, you wanna talk about the dam?
Well, we had talked, we had in the past talked about the condition of the dam, and, and during the public hearing, there were, some people were raising concerns about building this structure roughly a hundred feet downstream from a, by your own admission, a defective dam. So, I'm just, how's that conversation going? Because I, I don't see how this is gonna get built that closely down, that close downstream from a defective dam.
Good evening, Mark Lacasek, Tectonic Engineering. Uh, we were initially retained, uh, by the garrison, uh, as the owner.
We've met, Mark, actually, we have, yes.
How you doing, Neil? Uh, so we were retained by the owner, uh, who, of the dam, and the dam has a, the dam owner has an obligation, uh, to manage that dam. Uh, the dam was previously unlisted, uh, by the state. It was, uh, essentially, uh, registered, uh, for lack of a better term, with the state, uh, over the past year. Uh, the dam was inspected, uh, and inspection plan was developed for the dam, and emergency action plan was developed for the dam. Uh, the dam, uh, was found to have a, uh, conduit at the base, uh, which was no longer, uh, in its original configuration. Uh, and so the recommendation, uh, by our office, uh, was that the water level upstream of the dam should be managed manually on a temporary basis until the dam could be modified, uh, repaired, whichever course was selected to go forward. It is a, uh, time-consuming process, and it's one that is, and should be, a thoughtful process as to how you are going to move forward with it. I think the key point here is that the dam, uh, again, it's, it exists, there's an obligation, uh, to take care of it, to manage it, maintain it, uh, and that obligation exists with the dam's owner, and it exists whether this project is here or not. Uh, and so that process has proceeded with the EC. Uh, the DEC has visited the dam, the DEC has understood our recommendation to reduce the water level in the water body up, upstream. Uh, they have concurred with that, we've come up with a management plan. It is prepared to be implemented, uh, it has been accepted, uh, by the state. There is no, technically, an approval process for it, it's more of a non-jurisdictional process, but one that is complete, uh, and that water level is able to be managed, uh, as soon as the owners are ready to proceed with that plan. They're in the process of obtaining the contractor to do that. Uh, as for the future of the dam, what will happen to it, which way will it go, that is not unknown at this point, it's not decided, uh, but like I said, it's in process, uh, to figure out what is the right thing to do at this location. Uh, the water management plan, when it's in effect, it's a, uh, essentially, it's a, uh, a, a plan that will remain in place, uh, and in a routine operation, uh, for it to keep that water level essentially about, uh, four feet lower than it is, uh, today. Uh, and that is in active management, uh, and one that is watched and planned for and accounted for.
How mu- by your estimation, I don't wanna put you on the spot, how many gallons are we holding, or how many acre-feet is the dam?
Uh...
Is the impoundment?
Uh, the, the volume of it is less important than really the relative, uh, uh, elevation behind it, uh, because as the depth of the water increases, the pressure increases. So the thing that, uh, in the temporary condition that needs to be monitored is really, that is the level. Uh, the volume for it is, is somewhat irrelevant. There is a decent portion of the water body that, uh, is, uh, held below the toe of the dam. Uh, a word used to define that is undrainable. Um, it's a reserve...
I'm sorry, say that again?
Undrainable, uh, that depth below. Were the dam not to be there, there would still be a puddle of water.
Right. Have you thought about returning it to wetlands?
Uh, it's certainly a possibility. It's one of the options.
And, just in general, what would you say about building something like this, given that dam, the existing, let's, let's go, I mean, I, I don't know what your schedule is for down, for doing a drawdown on the dam, but you see my concern? I mean, what, what, what kind of volume are we looking at, and what would it do to this new dam, and what, I mean, it just doesn't make any sense to me to build something this close to something that defective.
Uh, I, I don't, can you raise your question?
What if the dam, what if we have another Sandy, or another Irene, or...
Okay.
I mean, what are we looking at?
Well, so the purpose of maintaining a lower level of it is to bring the factors of safety, uh, that would otherwise be there into very large numbers. Uh, the relationship of the water level behind the dam, uh, to the, the stresses that would be imparted on that dam are, are proportional. Uh, by taking off half of the water upstream of that dam, you are removing any, uh, the, comparative level... level of stresses that you're removing are dramatically different, so that the risk level is dramatically dropping as well. That is why the recommendation that we put out to the state was, was rapidly accepted by the state as being a prudent and an appropriate value to select.
Right, I mean, I, 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 I know, you know I know, that these applications move at the speed of a glacier. So my, I'm trying to get these timelines. If we're building, when are we talking about building a bridge? If, on best-case scenario, Jan, when will we be talking about building a bridge?
It's in Phase 1. It's 2024. Yeah, it's, it's part of our, when we get site plan approval, we want to build the bridge.
Okay, so let's go with that, 2024. So, Mark, where does that go into your plans for the dam? And lowering the water, or doing whatever you're going to do?
Right, so the management plan is set to be implemented this spring.
Okay.
Here, so the idea is to get that in place now. And again, you know, it, it is a prudent move irrespective of Hudson Valley Shakespeare. It is something that has to happen for the owner of the dam and that responsibility, not the application of Hudson Valley.
Who are we saying is the owner of the dam now? Are we saying, is it Mr. Davis, or is it the Shakespeare, or who's? Who's the owner of the dam? You just had it classified, right? First thing they're going to ask you, who's the owner of the dam?
Garrison.
Garrison Golf?
Garrison Properties.
Garrison Properties. Okay, thanks, Chip. Okay. Okay, thanks.
Okay. Can we talk about the alternatives, please? Because we, we, so, a number of people have asked why there can't be a route down effectively the first hole. I think that's been the proposal, down the first hole towards the straightaway of Snake Hill Road, instead of you creating a bridge here. So can we just talk about what the technical deficiencies are of that approach?
We studied two locations. We actually studied several more than that, but we're going to present to you two different alternatives. Okay. So I don't, I don't know that this was a request of the planning board. I think it came more from the public.
Did I hear some other things?
As to, you know, did we look at other options to get to the site from Snake Hill Road? And we did, and, you know, we, we quickly dismissed them. And then we went through the exercise over the last month to illustrate to you why we dismissed them. This plan here is an access road from the exist, existing maintenance yard on Snake Hill Road, where the, where the aqueduct runs. Beatty and Watson looked at three different options in this general location, and this is the best option. And this option shows both a grading plan with and without retaining walls. So all the little black lines that are so close together, those are two-foot contour lines each. They kind of blend together into a general black mass, but those are contour lines. And then you'll see, if you chose to install retaining walls, you could cut back on some of that disturbance by installing the walls. The takeaway is, without the walls, this would, this would create an additional 5.6 acres of disturbance. With the walls, that gets you to about 5.2 acres of disturbance. It's a massive cut up a hill, which at its worst is a 17-foot deep cut. And then there's sections of fill that are over 13 feet deep. This is on a regulated steep slope. It would trigger another wetland permit because of the water course along Snake Hill Road. And we would have to go over the aqueduct, which is not incredibly deep and would probably be a very difficult exercise. Not to mention the tree removal. This is a, a portion of the site that is relatively undisturbed. It's forested. We don't have a tree survey, but you've all seen this area. This is, this is a wooded area.
Sorry, you said to me the statement about the aqueduct, and it would be very difficult, something, something. Is that because of permitting from the City of New York, or something else?
Lynn, do you want to go through that? It's a, it's a shallow type system, isn't it?
Yes, the, there would certainly have to be some work on the existing entry. There is a right-of-way. So there is a right to cross there, and that's in the original deed from when the city acquired the property. There is a traveled way there, but it would have to be brought up to grade. What happens in this, there are two conditions of structure with the aqueduct. It's either in a tunnel, or it's what's called cut-and-cover, or it's transitioning between one and the other. Cut-and-cover, basically, they built the tunnel on the ground, and then they covered it. And that's what we have here. So the water, the, if I recall correctly, it's, it's maybe three or four feet down to the actual top of the tunnel. So we anticipate that anything that would have to be done to bring that up to the, a condition where regular traffic or significant amount of traffic would have to go over it, we would have to do a lot of work to protect the, the aqueduct. The point that was made by the comments that came from the public was that the site distances would be, would be better. The site distances would be longer. But if you have a Porsche, people kind of go fast along there. So... I've been waiting three weeks to get that in.
It doesn't matter what car I drive, I go pretty fast on it.
So at any rate, what we did is we studied three routes up the hill. And, and, and once, and when we decided which of the two entries into the maintenance area were, we would use, we picked the southern one because that's higher in elevation. So that gives us less grade to travel up the hill, less grade to overcome, simply because of the, there's a, there's a several feet of drop between those two elevations on, on the entry points. And we graded a 10% road. You can't keep, you can't just go flat, 10% flat. You've got to make transitions, you've got to, you've got to flatten it out. The 10% came from the New York State Fire Code's requirement for a fire truck. I said requirement, that's a mistake. It's actually, it's actually the recommended one. You can get it waived. We, we could make this a little bit better with 12%. I don't want to leave that unsaid, but, but it wouldn't get very much better. So we graded, if you see three colored lines on this map, there's no, the two that are, don't have the grading, have 50-foot cuts. So we, we projected a, a route that would get us through the steep slopes with a minimum amount of cut, using a 10% grade, and turning radii that worked for the fire trucks. And that's what we have. Jan mentioned the, the amount of disturbance, which we posted on here, 5.6 without retaining walls. If we put retaining walls in a couple of areas, we could reduce that down to 5.2 acres. So that's, so we did that exercise based on that recommendation. There was another suggestion that came to go out onto Phillips Brook Road. And essentially, we have the same condition. We have an 18% road going down there. Occasional person that knows how to drive that road can negotiate it. And, but we don't want, we don't want an exiting theater crowd to negotiate that road trying to get out of there. And so, so we basically applied the same principles, and we have 4.9 acres of disturbance if we use retaining walls. We get a bigger reduction, we can get it down to 3.2 in this particular scenario. Again, same basic criteria. The rest of this, the rest of the new roads proposed, I think the steepest grade is 6.5%. So just, so you get that in comparison of what we designed. This road is partly on the aqueduct, and frankly, it's not supposed to be there. So if we were to reconstruct it, we would have to bring it out onto Phillips Brook Road a little, little east of the aqueduct. And then we'd have the question of, well, what's the adequacy of Phillips, Phillips Brook Road? And as much as I'm willing to debate this with you, I don't think I'm willing to debate the idea of paving Phillips Brook Road. So that, so we have that, so we have that situation to, to, to concern ourselves with. So all in all, we think we've pretty much demonstrated that any access from the straightaway on Snake Hill Road or from Phillips Brook Road is really out of the question, as far as we're concerned.
Questions?
I have a question. Just out of curiosity and not, I'm trying to visualize what this grading looks like. But with the maintenance areas now, there's existing driveway leading onto Snake Hill Road. Is there any way that this can be configured to utilize that existing driveway?
The, that was the other, I'm sorry.
Which would be, if I'm not mistaken, as I have, would be in this area here, going onto Snake Hill, where the maintenance buildings are now?
Not in, not on, not on that map.
The previous one is not.
Use this, use this one instead.
Uh, well, I think it's a little bit further up. If I got my bearings right, right around that area. Is there any way that could possibly be utilized?
That would, that would present a greater problem, because there's, because the grade goes downhill.
Okay, yeah, I was just trying to picture.
And, and, and if you, if you look at the topo on here, you'll see the grade goes downhill. That increases the net change of grade from the bottom to the top. That means the road gets longer. It's just a simple division.
But it seems as if almost it could be a shorter path. And again, it's-
It's not going to be a shorter path if, if the, what's driving the length of the road is the vertical change.
Yeah, yeah.
And so if we drop the beginning of the road and leave the end where it ends, we'll have more grade to overcome and a longer road.
On a flat plain, it looks good, but...
You're on a flat plain.
Okay.
We, we don't have many of those.
Laney, good question.
So, so, let-
Question to make, if you were going to move on to another topic?
I was, I was not. I was going to ask Ron, I'd like you to make a, give us a viewpoint, not right now, I don't want to put you on the spot, but we have, we have basically the comparison of two heterogeneous things. One is the creation of a bridge, which we can debate whether, there are factual elements about it. There are structures that will be put in a wetland buffer. It will have visual implications for the area versus this, which has significant disturbance and et cetera. So I'd like to ask you to come back to us as a board, not tonight, it's late, but to come back to us to help us to think about how to compare two heterogeneous things. Because they are different, with the same purpose, or at least similar purposes, but I think we don't, we're not, it's not easy, at least for me, to be able to figure out how to choose A versus B, and they're very different. Not that we're choosing it, but to assess the opinions.
I think we're just parking down below with a gondola.
A gondola's always good, a funicular. Let's build a funicular. All right. All right, you want, Dennis, go ahead.
On, on the area where the existing dam is, the bridge going out now, what could be done to accommodate the exit at that location?
Well, we, we look, we looked at that, and the, it's, obviously, you could rebuild the dam, and the dam would have to be built wider with a wider top, because it's only good for one-way traffic now. The more critical point, and John Kenning could tell you, is that the site distance available for somebody exiting or entering, particularly towards Route 9, from or towards Route 9, is too, too short for the, to, to make it safe.
Which is a good lead-in to this slide here. It's labeled 2C in the packet. And this shows the, the site distance at the proposed driveway at Snake Hill Road. It is specifically located to maximize site distance, and the site distance that we have far exceeds both the minimum requirement by the county and the preferred requirement. And those numbers are on this graphic. We have 520 feet looking right, when you're making a right, looking right onto Snake Hill Road, and we have 400 feet looking left. And we also, and you, you could see it's here on the map, we identified the minimum requirement and the preferred requirement. Those are county standards. So this is in an ideal location to maximize site distance, where the existing driveway going over the dam is not.
So let me interrupt for a second. It's 10 o'clock. I, I'd like to keep going for another half hour, if folks on the board are okay with that. Folks comfortable? Yes? Yes, Dennis? Eh? Eh? Put in for overtime, okay?
Yeah, yeah.
All right. All right, let's keep, what? Double, double.
10:30, a hard 10:30. A hard 10:30.
Yeah, we'll make it, we'll make it a hard 10:30. Yeah, I'm not going to, I'm not going to fight you. I'm not going to fight. What? I'd like to actually, so you had something else to say, or not?
No, I just wanted to introduce that slide, which I just went over before.
Okay, what I'd like to do is actually, personally, I'd like to turn to the sighting of the tent. That is something that got a significant amount of, of airtime, both in written and in verbal commentary. I'd like to just hear your arguments and discussion points on that, please. Because frankly, as a, when we went through the EAF Part 3 in detail, we did not talk about that at length, but the, the public had a very strong reaction to it. So I think it'd be worth, worth hearing your thoughts on.
Sure. Laney is going to walk you through the site.
Great, thank you.
Okay, so, sure. There are several ways that we, in the early planning process, evaluated options for tent. And a lot of them have to do with the code regulations in the town. So we looked at, and I need two maps here. Lynn, do you mind helping me hold that one up for a minute? Thank you. So we considered a couple options along this area, closest to Route 9. Those would be highly visible and not meet the requirements for visibility from the road when we would do a viewshed analysis. So those were taken off the table, as they were not, they were not going to meet anything to do with the EAF requirements for viewshed from public roads. We also looked at a few locations over here, where there's a septic system. We cannot build on the septic system. And we looked at a few options along this zone, and again, similar to the road, it's steep slopes. So it didn't leave us a lot of options for where to actually look at citing the tent that met a lot of the EAF regulations and the code regulations. So with that in mind, and as we've shown you before, but we printed out large, we looked at the tent location very specifically in terms of our viewshed analysis, and locations that we all decided together, from both the western side of the river and from the points along our property line from public spaces. And I think with those, and I'll just kind of flip through them here, you know, we're, we're doing quite a bit of additional planting on-site to help with that viewshed analysis, so that the tent is actually not visible. And that's, that was our charge, right, is to make it not visible from public areas. So we've talked a lot, and I know, I'm telling you guys all things you already know, so I'm sorry. We looked at our overlay buffers. We have talked many times with you guys about additional planting in areas that do not have planting at the moment in the form of trees. And so we looked at our studies. These are from around our site. They should be very familiar to you by now, but we just wanted to make sure it was big. So this one, right here, is taken, excuse me, from over here, at number six, looking up. And this is actually physically modeled, so I know you're going to tell me you can't see the tent, but that is the point. It's in there, I promise. It's way back here. The, so the plantings that are already in sight, and this is a winter view specifically because it would be the most visible time from a public road. So proving that, or showing here that this is not visible. And, I mean, I will flip these quickly, but I want, we've looked at all of these. This is along Snake Hill Road. This probably feels fairly familiar to you. This is our pond on site. Again, modeled in the background. The manager's quarters is here. The proposed rehearsal barn and the tent at the top. Again, this is showing the proposed planting that would happen, and the existing planting in a winter view, not very impactful from our public road that we talked about. This will be very familiar. We just looked at this as the existing bridge site. Again, here's our new road in the background, kind of dashed in for a bit of orientation. The proposed rehearsal barn, and again, the tent at the top. Again, winter view. So these, I think what we're trying to show here, and what I've talked about a little bit, is that we are looking at locations from various perspectives and trying- bit, is that we are looking at locations from various perspectives and trying to identify the one that has the least anal, excuse me, the least impact when you're driving to the site, or past the site, or from across the river. We're happy to show these, I'm not sure you can see anything on those, so it'll, might be a bit silly, but again, same thing, we've modeled the tent in all of these views so that we can show that this is the best location not to see it.
So, I think one of the problems that the public has is that the public doesn't necessarily understand what the ridgeline rules are. And, you know, it's my understanding that the ridgeline rules are that, it's on a protected ridge, you're not supposed to build anything. This is not a protected ridge.
Correct.
And then, the next question is whether or not you can see things from public spaces. And I, I just think that there's been a lot of confusion, and I'm not sure how we could explain to the public what the actual rules are about sighting, because I think that people think that because it's a ridge, you can't put anything there, but it's really about what you can see from there, you know, what you can see, where you can see the ridge from a public space. So it's not actually looking out, but looking, you know, down. So, I, I, I don't know, as, as, you know, as a board, I feel like that's probably something, if we could figure out a way to communicate that, because that seemed to be the major confusion.
Well, you are communicating, they're out there, they're out there, they're out, why don't, hold on, are you done?
I'm done.
Go ahead, I.
Well, I just wanted to say, I mean, regardless of what the rules are on a ridgeline view, I, I appreciate the, the effort to reduce the view of the tent, but I feel like, given how the public feels about the, if the tent is perched on that particular view, and I, I, you know, perhaps putting it there actually does comply with the town code, I, I'm not sure, but if you, but in order to make it more, you know, I think if, if one wanted to make it more amenable to the town, I don't think anyone said, I, I don't think there were many people at any rate that said they don't want a, a tent at all. But that, I think that particular spot is, is troublesome to many, and it may not matter as much if it is visible from some other location, if it just isn't in that particular location, that's kind of like an iconic view. I'm, I'm, that's just a thought.
Can I, can I, can I just add?
I, I, I just wanted to, to just say one comment on perspective, because obviously we're gonna comply with all of the, the regulations, and we're gonna be bound by what this group says, and, and, but one consideration that I think really has to be in the mind is we want Shakespeare to succeed in this site. And so, things like having the inn and having a second stage, they were part of their future vision, right? They weren't part of what it needs to succeed. The view from the tent is their brand. Shakespeare, in every review, in every newspaper, talks about that brand. We can put this tent in the woods, we can put it somewhere else, and Shakespeare will fail. This is part of their public promise, too. And so I think as we think about the needs of the public, we think about the sustainability of this organization as stewards of this property. That tent location, I was supportive of them, even though I didn't love it compromising on the, this, eliminating the second stage and the inn, because those weren't essential to their promise, but this is. And I, there are a lot of iconic moments on this landscape, many of which are protected and are part of, for people to enjoy. This particular location of the tent is the one that checks all of the boxes in terms of regulation, noise, sightlines, but it is also necessary for them to succeed. So I just wanted to give that perspective about why I've been an advocate for them to say, this really matters, as much as I love this site with all my heart, it really matters that Shakespeare succeeds and that they are able to offer their public who's moving from one iconic site to another, something of that experience, so thank you.
Dan, do you have something else to say on that?
I think to answer Ms. Connors' quandary or provide a solution, the Storm to King doctrine is really simple. It's what you see looking into the property, not what you see looking out from the property, it's that simple.
So, I mean, any more on the sighting? So I, I've been, I, I did ask in the conversation for one of our partner organizations to come speak for a couple minutes, because in, in the commentary from Mr. Hollis's office, there was a citation of what was said by the Conservation Board. And I, I just wanna, I, I, I just want Mr. Andy Galler to come up here and just give us a little sense of what was discussed, because I, I think it's important, given that they were quoted as saying certain things, just wanna make sure that that's in keeping with whatever was happening, I just wanna make sure we're all clear on what, what's been, the process has been with the Conservation Board, and I'm gonna just take a prerogative, just let Andy just take the mic for a couple minutes, and just clarify exactly what's been said and what's been done related to the applicant, the Conservation Board. So I'm sorry, Andy, I forgot it, we're in the heat of the thing so many times, I forgot to bring you up, so just, can you just?
It's fine.
And thank you for joining us.
Thank you. We had a site visit, I believe it was in January, and we, most of the members were there, and we looked at both where the tent would be sited and the bridge and the parking areas, and the Conservation Board is very thankful that all the parking areas have been moved out of the wetlands, wetland buffers. I made the comment, when I looked at, this is not the Conservation Board, this is Andy, and I said, yes, that type of bridge could be built and probably built with minimal impact to the wetland buffer and the stream itself, both during construction and afterwards. But I added, which was not in the document that you saw, why would you want to build such an expensive and visually invasive structure? Since that time, a few members of my board, as well as our environmental officer, have also pointed out, which I think Neil Toman pointed out, was the comment of non-point source pollution, what's gonna come off that bridge, something I never thought about. So, I mean, we, we'd like to have, we'd like to have you come back with the revised plans, because we do have, which I don't want to get into now, but we do have a couple other issues in terms of meadow restoration plan and the SWIP. Okay?
Andy, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you sharing that. Okay, uh.
Are we, you're moving on from the tent?
Yeah, unless you have questions with the tent.
I just have one, I have one, one comment that maybe you can get back to me on later. It, it's, you've. Well, I guess this is gonna be Dan or Jan.
I don't know who it went to, so they were doing, they were talking, I just wanna make sure.
Oh, okay, thanks. I, I found in the, I wasn't looking for this, but I, in the New York State Fire Code, every 10 years, New York State Fire Code revises, so we're working with the 2020 revision of the New York State Fire Code. And when they give, when they make an addition or they make an amendment or a revision to the code, they mark it with a dark black line next to the new piece of code, or the amendment, or the revision. So, on section, and if you, please, write it down and we'll talk about it, Section 3105 of the 2020 Fire Code of New York State, and under that, Section 3105.4, which says the use period for a temporary special event structure erected in accordance with ANSIE 121, which is the engineering part of it, shall not be erected for a period of more than six consecutive weeks. So maybe if we can take a look at that code provision and.
Well, the, the project, the tent is a permanent, well, it's not a temporary facility. Mr. Goldsmith is, just happens to be here, he's the tensile engineer, and he can speak to the, it's not like a pup tent that we all put in the backyard when we were kids, and I think Mr. Goldsmith would be helpful to answer that question for you.
Yeah, thanks, it's a pleasure to be here tonight. I'm a senior principal at FTL Design Engineering Studio, we design these types of structures all over the United States, I've designed these tensile structures for over 40 years, and I would just say, what you mentioned, ANSI's temporary structures, this is not a temporary structure, this is a permanent building. I don't know if any of you have been to Denver Airport in the last, since 1995, you walk into that space, it's a terminal, you don't think of it as a tent, but it is a tensile structure. In the same way, this is not like the existing tent that's up, been up at Bosque Bell, which is a temporary tent that's seasonal, it goes up and down, different type of material, different type of loading. This tent is gonna be designed for 120 mile an hour wind loads, that's what's required there, that's basically a hurricane force winds, plus there's safety factors on top of that. So, and we've done tent structures in Orlando at Disney World, that's gone through 130 mile an hour basic wind speed, that's gone through two hurricanes without a problem, you know, so these, these structures are really not temporary structures, they're permanent buildings. You know, and I know in, in, you know, our cultural, sort of Western culture, we always think of, you know, lightweight structures as something that aren't really strong, you know, but the reality is, these structures are incredibly strong, and you just have to design them, you have to have the right foundations, the right engineering, and as far as fire code goes, they're non-combustible. This is, this is one of the materials, the material we're gonna use, it's a glass fabric, it's coated with Teflon, it lasts 45, 50 years, something like that. So it's a permanent structure, the, the oldest one was set up in 1974 at Laverne College in California, still there, was tested about five or six years ago, 90% of its strength.
So it's accepted in other, other situations as a permanent?
Completely accepted as a permanent structure.
Says this one will be up all year round.
This will be, it'll take full snow load, it'll take full wind load, it'll be, you won't go any different than if it was a copper roof, except it would be translucent, and it's part of the iconic quality of the Hudson Valley Shakespeare Festival.
So the engineering is completely different than what you're using now?
The engineering is different than what we're using now. When we designed the, the present structure 20 years ago, whenever that was, it was, because it was gonna be only up, Bosque Bell only wanted it up for that season, you know, and come down, we designed it more like we would design a circus tent. It's a different type of approach, a different type of structure, different type of fabric, et cetera. So, this is gonna be a permanent structure, and it's gonna be up for the test of time.
So that six consecutive weeks would only apply to a tent like the one that you're using now?
Correct, absolutely correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
All right, thank you. So we have, we have 12 minutes, let's do light and noise, just some more detail on what you did and. Yeah, she, she, she's the source of light? You can use that.
So we just wanted to highlight again our lighting strategy for the site lighting. As we've talked about before, site lighting, such as path lighting, will be dark sky compliant, and that is because it is friendly to the environment, it is the right thing to do, and it will provide low level of lighting for paths. This lighting will be used only when needed during performances, so it's not on all night, it is there to allow people to leave the tent and come to their cars, then once everybody's gone, it's turned off. And I think this is showing you four different instances of how that lighting works. During a performance, at intermission departure, where you can see a little bit brighter light on the path system, and at the parking lot, and then post-departure or on a non-performance night, you can see it's dark. At the parking lot, we will be required to meet code lighting, we anticipate that being very similar to existing lighting that's already on-site for parking, it is going to be very respectful, and again, on the same system, that when it is not needed, it is not in use, it is off. You can see an example here of path lighting, this is a baller light with a downlight, so you can see it's, there's a person here, not particularly tall, it's really only lighting the surface that you're walking on. And then a concept model of the proposed tent, as you can imagine, only used while it is in, being used for a performance and off otherwise.
So, the, a question for me, the departure photograph, while very helpful in showing the walkway, does not show the lights of the cars as they're leaving. So Jan, can you just stand on that map and point to where the depart, the cars would be coming out from, in the departure picture? Just, just, she's, that picture is the parking lot, so point to where the parking lot is, please. Okay, so the, so the, I, I think it'd be very helpful, because it's not depicted, I'm trying to see the lights of the cars that stream out, that's not.
So, we did not print those large for you, they are in the documents.
Just tell us what page number.
We'll find that page number for you, I don't have it memorized, but it's on there.
Okay.
And it talks, there's a section for you to show how many cars are stacked, this is coordinated with our traffic engineer of how many cars will be stacked at a general departure.
And remind me, we're, we're having traffic that departs both from directly to nine as well as through the Snake Hill, your new, your new exit, right?
Yes.
Okay, and it would be helpful to understand, and we had a very tearful husband and wife stand here and tell you that the lights that are gonna come from that bridge are gonna go into their little house that sits above it, is that correct?
So we also, we did a section based on that specifically to show that the, the location of the house is quite significantly above the roadway.
Okay.
And the way lights work, we have the trajectory, that will, will provide you that page number.
That would be helpful to me, please, thank you.
We haven't determined that exactly yet, the particular fixtures.
Other questions on lighting? None?
So there's no lighting on the bridge at all? I mean, not even like reflectors to show where it is, or?
That is, that's not a question I have an answer to.
Someone said there was no lights on the.
Definitely no, like downlighting or like.
Baller lighting.
Baller lighting.
But, so if your, your, the headlights of the cars are enough to be able to see where the bridge is, and, you know, it's not, not necessary?
Right.
Okay.
I got a question regarding bridges came to mind regarding lighting. Would that be utilized for pedestrians also? That bridge?
There are no sidewalks along there, so it, you're really not on that road as a pedestrian.
Well, if you looked across the street and you went to the show and you wanted to walk across?
To be able to walk across.
Sure.
The old driveway over the, the dam, if they wanted to.
Lighting?
Noise?
Or noise.
Noise. We just did light it. More lighting? Shed some more light in the light? No, noise.
It may be helpful if you don't have, Andy, to have the 11 by 17 image in front of you, just because some of the line works, you'll, I certainly couldn't see it from this distance. These three images are, are in the, in the noise study, blown up for, for you tonight, but I want you to kind of focus just on the, the yellow area, with the sharp yellow line. That is the 40 decibel reading which we're required to meet at the property line. The white line on this image is the property line. So in the, the top left corner, this is your typical average performance at night, and you could see that we're completely compliant, that yellow line is nowhere near the property line. Okay? And this is like, I don't know, 99, 95% of the performances, okay? Not musicals, just your typical Hudson Valley performance. Where we ran into an issue was when we analyzed a musical performance, and there's only been one musical performance in the last 35 years in the entire history of, of the Shakespeare Festival that occurred. When we analyzed the musical performance at night, there was an exceedance at the property line. So if you follow that white, or that yellow contour, you see where it touches that zigzagged white property line. zigzagged, uh, white property line. And we shaded in or hatched the, the areas where the exceedance occurred over the property line, okay? So that is what we're talking about, that's Receptor 3 or 3A.
So just so I understand, the blue box?
Houses.
Yes. The blue box that is the one closest to 3, that is the couple that has the house that overlooks the bridge?
No.
No?
No, this is...
Where am I looking then, sorry?
So Snake Hill Road's out here.
Oh.
This is up on the hill by...
Oh, I see.
And this is...
So, so which house is this, please?
The main fountain, didn't have to be...
Yeah, thank you.
So, you just see the same property line here with the jug? There's one home here and one home here. These are your two homes.
Is the one you're pointing to right now, that green one? Like, I, I don't know how to...
There was a pink one.
I'm just trying to figure, there's a Victorian house around the bend of Snake, I know you don't know the houses. Can, can someone just tell me which houses were...
Victorian one, then there's the contemporary one, and then there's the green one.
So which, which one is this house that's at the, that you're depicting on this chart that is this house that is most directly affected before mitigation? Which, whose home is that?
I think it was recently on the market, I think it's the contemporary home with the kind of curved glass.
Okay.
I'd say it's the... You know, one right on?
I don't know the names, I just know where they look.
The tent?
Yes.
Very close to that, that's that house, quite a difference.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
So just wanted to, for everybody to understand that this is a very unique circumstance. At night, musical performance doesn't happen often, but we analyzed it for a worst case scenario. And then on the, on the right-hand side, bottom right, um, we studied three different or a few different types of mitigation items. With only one of those mitigation items in place, whether it be relocating the back of house structure, um, putting a different, um, material on the tent or, um, a berm, we can eliminate and be code compliant. So the third image is a model, um, with the musical performance at night with mitigation in place and then shows, shows code compliance. Questions?
I'm not a fan of musicals.
That's hilarious. That is just amazing. Okay, uh, so can you, for the layman, at point 3, whether it's the no mitigation, you know, play version that, that Kim would go see, or it was a musical without mitigation that I would go see, uh, can you just help us with this yellow-ish color? I, I don't know how to interpret a 38 to 40 decibel sound. I just, can you please, sir, you're the audio expert, can you just help us? Maybe you have some way of having us understand what a 38 to 40, because what is, what is, we're talking about is, as the note from AKRF states, this is, uh, noise levels were quietest at night. So we're talking about like, this is 10 or 11 o'clock at night where people of a certain age may go to bed and this musical is occurring. Well, I go to bed.
I go to bed.
Yeah, I go to bed. Um, and so I just, I'm trying to understand, even at the 3 in the light, the green and yellow color of the, this point for these colors, can you just give us a sense of what that volume is?
Yeah, the code has two different levels, so 50 decibels during daytime and that's until 8:00 PM. And then starting at 8:00 PM, it drops a level to 40 decibels. 40 decibels is very, very quiet for outdoors. It's, um, people talking, normal level without microphones, that's 60 decibels.
So you're talking at 60 decibels right now?
Um, yeah, 60 decibels would, would be something like that.
I'm serious, I, I, I don't, I don't, I don't...
We, we, yeah, yeah, that's correct.
I understand 60 miles an hour, I don't know 60 decibels.
Yes, this would be more, more or less 60.
In a Porsche. Right, right.
Yes, this would be about 60 decibels.
What you're, how you're speaking now is 60?
Yes.
Okay.
Whispering will be, would be like 40 decibels, something very, it's very quiet. Um, actually, the only location, I, I visited the site many, many times, the only location that I measured levels at night below 40 decibels was in this area, around location 3. Everywhere else, it's 40 to 50 decibels.
You're saying the ambient sound?
The ambient sound, the ambient sound, yes.
The ambience etc. are loud.
Yes, just, you hear the cars, the boats, motorcycles, uh, when you measure that. Everywhere else, it's clearly above 40 decibels. The only location that, that's why we studied location 3. This is the only location that it gets really, really quiet at night.
And how did you know what the sound of the musical will be?
So that's based on the, I, I went in 2019, I visited Bosco Bell and I measured during performances, so that's based on that. I mean, based on those measurements, um, that's how, how we did this study.
And could you advise us, because it's a, it's not the musical or the play, it is the, I'm actually as equally interested in the car noise when they're done. How do we think about the cars leaving? Uh, the engines idling and the occasional jerky guy who honks his horn? Can you just give us some advice on those decibel levels?
Hopefully no, no honking, I mean, that's, yeah, yeah.
Maybe no honking sign or two.
Yes.
Keep going though. And idling and...
Yeah, obviously the, the honking has a lot of, um, meat and high frequencies that are, and that's why, um, you have it because it's too, um, you want people to hear that you're coming, right?
Wouldn't get great horn if it was quiet.
Yes. So those are very audible, so, um, typically the, the car in, idling is, uh, a lot of low frequency noise that the air is less sensible to it. Um, and then it depends on the velocity of the car. If the car is moving very fast, there is a lot of friction on the pavement and that generates more noise as well, so, so it's a combination of several things.
Are tires louder than engines?
Which one?
Are tires louder than engines?
The, the road?
Yeah.
Yes, yeah. I mean, when we study roads, I mean, it depends on the pavement. You can have a pavement that absorbs sound, that it's very porous, but the, the typical pavement that we have in these areas is very noisy. And actually, uh, when you listen to cars driving on Route 9, crossing that bridge further north, I mean, you can hear it clearly when they drive through that cement, it's very, very loud. And that's basically the, the tires against, against the asphalt.
Other, other questions on noise? All right, we're going to call it here, it's 10:30. Dan, you want to say something?
Well, just any questions?
Go, please.
You and, uh, Ron and Aaron, as to when we're at a point when you want us to do the revisions to the EAF Part 3 and, and to make it submitted to you, what format would that look like, number one? How would you want that to be presented to you for final evaluation? And secondly, because of the topic that you had here today, I think we've been really good about getting things in two weeks before, uh, because the team works really hard at that. But to get something printed, the EAF printed is hard. Uh, spoke to Aaron about it a little bit and we have the capacity to get it in two weeks before the meeting electronically, uh, which is how it's posted on the website anyway. So if that, that can work, we, we won't lose time because we don't have a printed copy in.
I, because Steve is not here and I, I, and I don't know if Adam, you can opine specifically, I don't know what, what we need on the, on a revised Part 3 at this point. Ron, do you have a view?
Okay. Maybe for the company, if you don't want the electronic version, posting it to the website is very significant. I'm sorry. So posting it to the website would be very significant. Um, the, the hard copies are really for the board to review, so it, you know, you can be guided by that.
What do we need the revised Part 3 for at this point? Just can you just, oh, Aaron, you have a point? Okay, go ahead, Aaron.
Yeah, if, I was going to ask if you wanted me to go through the memo, but I think you want to cut it for time. But we had a couple of recommendations in there that we think, just for the benefit of the public, and when you ultimately get to a decision, you have to have the Part 3 up to date. Right, right now, the last one you've seen is October or September, it's on the old plan. You want to see the, the new plan incorporated into that document and the public to be able to digest it because they've complained about it being too piecemeal and not easy to follow. So we recommended that they update the record. The question is, is a digital format okay?
I, I don't have a problem with being digital format. Does anyone have a problem with the digital format?
The other question on, another factor of that is the traffic study, which is particularly voluminous and had a lot of different pieces over time, right? Um, so we've been in communication with John about that, about how he can get that into a better record that is understandable and flows, which, are you okay with us working with him to get that updated?
Yeah, I, I think it's fine. I think, look, what we've described as a board is I think the public will benefit by more additional transparency. My, I don't want to speak for my colleagues, uh, and different people may have different opinions, but we've had a lot of good and hearty conversation or at least information to us and we're at a place, as we've said, in June, we would come back and maybe have our debate as a board, a discussion about where we are at this point. So I think it is fine if you want to in parallel produce a revised Part 3. My guess is we have all the pieces in front of us to start having a conversation about where we stand on the subject of positive versus negative secret declaration. We've stated that has been the plan for many months and I, unless someone in this board has a, has an impediment to that path, I think we can still go forward with that discussion.
And then us doing it electronically will help us meet that goal and that timeline and that time requirement.
Now, I can't guarantee we're going to call a vote in June since we were supposed to tonight have a discussion as well as the presentation of fact, that's not your fault, but I want to make sure this board has the appropriate time to discuss, uh, its perspectives on it. And we'll, I'll, I'll call an audible in the next meeting about whether we're ready to vote on the secret declaration at that point, but...
That's, that's helpful, that's very helpful, thank you.
So, I, I don't want to make an expectation, but in June now, I don't think we need any more presentation, we're going to have a discussion. I'm going to go around this table, hopefully two more board members will be here.
That'd be good.
But we have a quorum and I will go through and we'll say, what are your thoughts? Where do you stand on things? We'll have that conversation and then if people are ready to vote, we'll take a vote.
Okay.
And again, I, I leave it open because Gab is not here, he's been advising us for some time about it and Ron, uh, so I need to have that conversation. But that's the expectation, I've shared that for several months now straight.
That's, that's fine. And I, I think that the, uh, logistics of it, it's just something I wanted to cover, just so we wouldn't have a miscommunication on that.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else, gentlemen, ladies, anyone?
I was supposed to go, I was supposed to be away that week in June, but there you are.